Carl was meeting the city council. The order, will the clerk please call and roll? I'm here.
Councilmember Barry.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Snapper.
Here.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
And I believe Councilmember Siemens will be joining us in a little while. And I'd like to just make two comments. The first one, I just wanted to let people know that we're scheduled for a shorter meeting than usual this evening. There was an item on the agenda. Up until last week, we were going to have a report from and discussion with the Health Services Impact Committee. And they requested that the item be pulled and they needed more time. And since that was only a week ago, that made it a little hard to slide some things into the agenda. So that we're going to meet with the city attorney at the end of this meeting rather than our usual method of late, which has been any of those kinds of administrative function sessions or closed sessions that we do them before the meeting. This evening, we're going to do it after the meeting. So this should be a shorter meeting than usual. And the second item is, I just wanted to note that I heard from a couple of people today. I'm not sure whether they were all linked in ways that I don't understand or whether they came up with the same thing separately. A number of them had the idea that it would be really nice for Tacoma Park to have an inaugural ball. And I thought that enough people contacted me and thought that would be a good idea, that it's probably worth pursuing. And I was going to put those people in contact with one another. And I wanted to let everybody else know that if you're interested in working on something like that, I guess for the moment, contact me and I will try and put everybody who's interested in touch with one another. So that's all I have, are the council comments. Looking to the right this evening.
Very nice, very nice.
Councilmember Robinson.
Okay. I've gotten a couple of pieces of feedback about the proposed leaf blower, gas leaf blower ban that was brought to us a couple of weeks ago. And I'm aware that a good path is to consider that ban and other items that might relate to our reducing our energy footprint or our pollution footprint, to consider those all kind of in a parcel. And I'm looking forward to that discussion, probably as I understand, early next year. At the same time, I've been thinking about this for some days and observing folks who use leaf blowers, it's leaf blower season, of course, and raking season. And I raked our yard yesterday when I got back from a trip to New York City. And when I was there, I saw somebody using a leaf blower. Used it for a long time for a very small area of grass. And I guess I'm really, I really wish we could ban leaf blowers, or gas leaf blowers. In fact, all two-cycle engines in the city of Tacoma Park, because they're really the worst offenders of gasoline engines. And they, it depends on where you look to find data, but they pollute, some people say 300 times as much as four-cycle engines and automobiles. I don't, I wonder if we'd have the police power to go around and enforce such a ban or the willingness to impose such a ban. That's why, one reason why I'm looking forward to the discussion in January. At the same time, there's nothing like a good old, a little bit of good old muscle power to get, move leaves around when you need to, and using a rake. So I'm even considering putting some wherases together, whereas we're in a time of environmental crisis, some would say, and whereas using a rake is good for you, and so forth, that we promote the use of rakes. Now, that's kind of an easy way out, but this is kind of, I'm just kind of putting out my train of thought right now. I don't want us to lose track of the reason why the proposed ban on leaf blowers, two-cycle leaf blowers is out there. Certainly, there's the noise, but there's also the pollution. And it's a balance that I think we should, we need to be aggressive on in some way or another, so that we make the point strongly and get it right out there. So I just wanted to make those comments.
And if I can just follow up on that for a second and advise my colleagues that if there's any information that you would like staff to gather in preparation for that session on that request for banning of leaf blowers, which will probably be in the second half of January, if you can get those requests to staff sooner rather than later and then they can refine whatever information that we need. Other comments? Councilmember Barry?
Yes, some good news. Saturday's newspaper, The Washington Post, in the Metro section featured a beautiful photograph of Sligo Creek in the full autumnal glory and the caption saying something like, you know, "Beautiful fall in Tacoma Park." So I don't know if the property values inched up as a result of that publicity, but it was certainly nice to see. And they didn't make fun or tease us, which of course is a common occurrence. And there wasn't a leaf blower banner or fagot connoisseur in sight. Maybe they were under the bridge, but it was a beautiful photograph and very good press for the city. And I like the idea of a ball, but a ball seems a bit too snooty for Tacoma Park, so maybe we could call it a community celebration to welcome the president, the new president. But I think a ball might be, you know, it's kind of exclusive, has a connotation of exclusivity, which is not necessarily in keeping with our more democratic reputation.
Councilmember Wright?
Three items to mention. First, I would just say maybe we could call it a bash instead of a ball. And just that I'm very excited and enthusiastic about our, the new administration that's coming and feel like we now have someone down the road from us that, whose thinking is maybe a little bit more in line with our thinking about how government should work and the role of government. The second thing I want to mention is just Pepco lights continue to be a problem. And I think it's just not fair that basically what Pepco has done is failed to put together a decent reporting system on lights that works for people and that there's a follow-up process and a way for them to measure their performance and say the job they're doing. So instead, the city spends its resources and effort to chase around after Pepco to get the lights back on. So I think we need to take further steps associated with that. So I would like the city staff to sort of look into what our options are. Should we be talking to Senator Raskin and David Hickson in Missouri and suggest that they propose some sort of legislation that would hold Pepco accountable? Do we need to be talking to Doug Gensler in the Attorney General's office about enforcing some current law that's on the books? I'm sure they're required to have a maintenance process. So something needs to be done to sort of break this logjam around Pepco and so that the city can stop spending its resources on keeping track of which lights have been fixed and following up. And also, for that matter, Councilmember Irvin's office can stop doing it as well. And then the last thing I wanted to comment is also on the leaf blowers. I feel like there's, at least in the listserv and the conversations I've seen so far, there's sort of ban or no ban. And that's kind of what's happening, where people are at. And I think that there's ways that we can deal with the main two issues that I've heard. The first is noise, and we have a noise ordinance, so we should look at whether that noise ordinance is covering this issue. If it's not, maybe we need to adjust the noise ordinance and make sure people know how to get it enforced. And then the second is environmental. And I started to do a little bit of research and I would hope the city staff could follow up on this and do more, but other municipalities have started to deal with this. And some of the ideas out there are things like banning leaf blowing between May and September, when people aren't really using it to clean leaves, they're using it to sweep away dust or debris. Or there's also, seems like there's been some improvements in the technology and the engines and what sort of particulate they let out. So maybe it should be that we have something phased in, that leaf blowers would need to be of a, after a certain period of time. In the future, they would need to be of a certain, to meet the certain standards of the government, so a newer leaf blower would have to be purchased. I'm not a fan of a ban because I just don't think it's practical, particularly in the short term. And I think that, I'm not sure what you're going to do in terms of all, like Bruce has said, all the large institutions. I'm not quite sure how people are going to be able to hire landscapers to come in and clean up their yards if that's what they choose to do. Because I think basically, they just won't come if they're forced only to use rakes as an option. So I think there's a lot of creative solutions and what I'd like to see from the city staff is sort of what are all the options of what other municipalities have done? I uncovered a few just with a few minutes of research on the web. I'm pretty confident we can find some other things that will mitigate and deal with a lot of the environmental issues. And really, there are much larger environmental opportunities out there that we can commit to as a city. And then the last thing is, I think there should be a big chunk of what Dan was alluding to, which is basically education about telling people what the options are and what the impacts are. And hopefully, many people would make the choice to use a different method.
Councilmember Clay?
Well, it's nice to be back with you guys this week. Thank you. I am, I'm going to stay for the whole meeting this time. So for those of you who don't know, I get sick at the last meeting, carted off to the hospital and have a small electrical problem with my heart, which apparently is, they said it's not a bad problem to have, it is fixable. But it did make my heart race for quite a while and I had an interesting week this week while I was trying to rest and recuperate. So thanks to everybody who called or sent me a note to say, "Get well." It worked. So, leaf blower. I'm actually not opposed to ban on leaf blowers, but I don't think that's the place I would start because I think there are, I guess there are other things that we could address where I would agree that the technology is probably better. But, you know, one thing that I would say is that this seems like a perfect opportunity to engage some of our young people and employ some of our young people with a rakes brigade. And maybe that's something that we could, we could look at doing. I know in other, in other cities where I have lived, they have had like kids, youth business incubators. When I lived in Oakland, the kids from Castlemont High School ran a coffee stand at the airport. And they had some other kids who developed lawn mowing and, we didn't have as many leaves there and lots of pine needles, but lawn mowing and other landscaping activities. And they had a youth business incubator that ran it. And I think it initially started with CDBG money and then in some places got picked up by REC and some places got picked up by the schools and worked relatively well. And there's a few things I think we've noted in the city that might be good for some youth engagement, youth business activities, and this might be one. So when I was thinking all week long about what were the sort of things that caused me stress that I could jettison in my life, I thought that one of the issues is this ongoing invasive growth issue around Boyd Court. And so I guess what I would like is to maybe have a meeting with the city manager and the Public Works person and maybe someone from planning there and look at Boyd Court and then the Elm Circle issue all at the same time. I could do it in the morning, almost any morning you wanted to, like between eight and 10, or I could do it at the end of the day. Or I could take some time off of work and come back in the middle of the day if that was what it took. But I would just love to clear these off of my plate and have a permanent solution so I don't have to bring them up every week. I think that the Elm Circle traffic has gotten a lot better, but there are definitely some regular violators that you see in the early morning and in the evenings. And occasionally, someone who's so dumbfounded when they get to the circle that they slam on their brakes as if they'd never seen a traffic circle before. And I have to tell you, I grew up in a town where there weren't any traffic circles, but the first time I saw a traffic circle, I was not so confused by it that I couldn't make my way around it. So I also think that while we're there, I'd like to look at the signage and maybe actually painting some arrows actually on the asphalt. Go this way, to help the few that are still violating because they're confused. I love the idea of inaugural ball. And I have to say that, after you guys laughed at me about whether or not there would be spontaneous partying and/or rioting in the street, as I was laying in my bed watching television, because that was all I could do on inauguration day or on election day, and I watched the spontaneous party occur outside the White House, I thought, okay, I wasn't entirely crazy, it just didn't happen in Tacoma Park. But, did it?
Yes, it did. And we had a march down Maple Avenue and up Philadelphia.
Wow, see, I was really out of it all week long. Wow!
Yes.
All right. All right, so I'm not insane. Great.
And not all of us thought you were insane.
I love the idea of inaugural ball. I don't care if we call it a hootenanny or a hoedown, or, but I think there should be a dance floor. I want there to be a dance floor. So that's my two cents on the inaugural ball, and I'd love to help out. There's continued interest in my ward around a youth council. And I talked about this when I first got elected and didn't go too far with it because I kind of wanted to see where things were going. But there seems to be some other interest in the city in doing some more work with teens and youth. And I was wondering if the city manager could tell us what it would cost if we had like a once-a-month youth council here, maybe in the council chambers before the council meeting or something, where we could actually get some staff support without it being, you know, something that is overwhelming. So if we did it maybe on a night when everybody's here already anyway, see what that would cost. I would be interested in knowing what that costs. An applause for Public Works. I got a notice this week that the Pepco lights that we ordered, I don't know, a year ago, we asked Pepco to do a cost estimate so we could have some lights installed at the corner of Ethan Allen and Elm, an additional light on one post, or maybe better lighting on one post because it was a really dim light, and then a new light in a place where there had been a couple of muggings and some teenagers engaging in other activities because there's essentially no light there and other kinds of odd activities going on, this strange dark patch on Elm. And they finally got the bid back from Pepco, which then allows us to give Pepco $4,500 to install the lights. And it only took a year. But thanks to Public Works for continuing to dog that and get us some lighting for that area. And then the last thing is, I thought that we had everything to install a crosswalk at Jackson. And as crossing at Elm and Ethan Allen is becoming more dangerous and we had a ride-on bus driver actually charge at one of my constituents, and the police came out and took a police report, and I called ride-on and I think he called ride-on, right at the, I know, isn't it amazing? It just blows your mind, doesn't it? That people don't realize that a giant bus is a lethal weapon. So anyway, I've been encouraging people to get off at Jackson and take the lovely walk through the neighborhood because there's actually a stop sign there, but a crosswalk would be even better. And I know the SHA agreed to it, but we were waiting for our concrete people to do the final concrete pours, which I thought were done. So if those are done and we could get the crosswalk installed and I could encourage my people in my ward to get off at Jackson and walk through the neighborhood instead of making that dangerous crossing at Ethan Allen, that would be great.
Councilmember Snapper?
Thank you. I just have one quick question concerning the WSSC work. I know a lot of us have commented on this in the past, and I do wonder if we could get an update on, particularly on Sligo Creek Parkway, which is quite a major thoroughfare of just exactly what the schedule is. In addition to, of course, lots of other streets that are going to park, but those are more neighborhood issues than citywide issues.
Yeah, there was actually an email inquiry, I believe it was from the mayor over the weekend, and please correct me if I'm wrong, mayor, but I believe the Public Works director indicated that she had checked with WSSC and it was probably towards the end of the calendar year.
And it was going to be some kind of a, they've hit rock and there was some other problem and it's, the project is going to carry, it's going to finish at about the end of the calendar year, but not have final determination and then it'll carry over into the spring.
What I will do tomorrow, Councilmember Snapper, is just take the excerpt from the email and send that to the council because it has much more detail than I'm recalling off the top of my head, but I'll get that out to you tomorrow.
Ruben, you had a nice guise on your street the other day on Main 45. We did, we did. One of the interesting things that the WSSC is discovering is if they don't repair the pipes fast enough, then the breaks in the pipes that they're not repairing, which is what happened on our street, we had, the place that they were repairing, they're busy repairing, but there was a break a little bit farther along. Anyway.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to comment on the leaf blowers, but I think we've covered that sufficiently for tonight. Just wanted to mention that the U.S. Postal Service has, again, after a couple of years ago, they had announced they were going to remove post, outdoor post boxes from street corners. They, after we signed a petition and did some lobbying with some of our federal legislators, they left them in. Again, I guess they've announced that they're going to be taking them out. And I see that Norman Ridgeway is in the audience. He's been circulating a petition, gotten quite a few signatures, which we're now ready to forward on to Congressman Van Hollen's office and Senator Raskin and County Councilwoman Valerie Irvin to see if we can't get some help again. Because the post office or the post box at Franklin Apartments is especially needed by those people who are seniors and disabled and unable to really find an alternative. Councilmember Clay mentioned a youth council. I would like to call to her attention that the Tacoma Park Community Action Group has partnered with Campfire USA and about 30 other organizations to hold a youth forum that's going to be held in the beginning of the year. And one of the outcomes of that could possibly be a formation of a youth council. I think it would be a group that Councilmember Clay might want to talk with to see how they could help to bring the young people together. And then lastly, I have had a number of people come to me about what are we going to do to celebrate the inauguration? And so I fully support the suggestions that we've had that Tacoma Park do something and I would also be willing to work on that. So thank you.
Councilmember Robinson, can you follow? Okay. Then we'll move along to just a brief agenda scheduling update. As I noted earlier, the Health Services Impact Committee presentation that was originally scheduled for this evening is delayed. I'm not sure when that's going to be. Next week, next Monday, we have the discussion of the bids for architectural services for the renovation of this room. The following Monday, the 24th, we have a work session discussion of city committees. We originally had tentatively both city committees and the council grant process, but at this point, it looks like we're just going to do city committees. So we have a couple of items that were originally scheduled for this month that will hold until next year. And then we will be on break after the meeting on Monday, the 24th, which is the Monday of Thanksgiving week. And then the council will be back in session after the first of the year. The next item is adoption of minutes, and we have before us minutes from October 6th and October 13th. Would somebody like to move their adoption?
Move.
I'll let the clerk sort it out. He said what there. All those in favor of the adoption of the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the ayes have it. Next item is public comment. We appreciate it if you could keep your comments to three minutes. And I'll just note at this point that I've been fairly flexible in asking people to wrap up their comments, trying to make sure that we hear what everybody has to hear. I think at this point, I'm going to be a little more, a little tighter on my asking people to stay with the three minutes, and I will do that for everyone, so treat everybody fairly, but just let people know that I'm going to jump in a lot sooner than I have been. So with that, Mr. Robinson?
Hello, my name's Pat Lovelock, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Main 4. I want to thank everybody for coming out to vote, and I have never seen such a voter turnout that I have on, at the middle school up here at Piney Branch. There were lines going on, it seemed to be for blocks. People couldn't wait to register their vote, and it felt so good to see people out there doing that. I also want to thank Terry and Joyce Siemens for helping people in our building, Franklin Apartments, to be in the other areas, to be getting back and forth to the polls. There must have been over 100 people from our building, I heard, that got out there to vote. And it was so great. So also, also I wanted to, an idea I have for the inaugural balls, I think we should call it the Obama Jammer, you know, Tacoma Park Obama Jammer. Yep, and, but it says on my shirt, you know, what does it say here? "Yes, we can?" Well, I think we should change it to, "Oh, yes, we did." Because a lot of people have finally got up and used their activism to show that we can do it when we have to do it. You know, that's what activism shows, we can do. You know, and I think it's a really great thing to remember that next time we have to vote. And also, I think we should be getting everybody out there who hasn't registered the vote yet to register the vote, so we can do the same thing year after year, month after month, so we can keep our government where we The next item is adoption of minutes, and we have before us minutes from October 6th and October 13th. Would somebody like to move their adoption?
Move.
Second.
I'll let the clerk sort it out. He said what there. All those in favor of the adoption of the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the ayes have it. Next item is public comment. We appreciate it if you could keep your comments to three minutes, and I'll just note at this point that I've been fairly flexible in asking people to wrap up their comments, trying to make sure that we hear what everybody has to hear. I think at this point, I'm going to be a little more, a little tighter on my asking people to stay with the three minutes, and I will do that for everyone, so treat everybody fairly, but just let people know that I'm going to jump in a lot sooner than I have been. So with that, Mr. Robinson.
Hello, my name's Pat Lovelock, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Y4. I want to thank everybody for coming out to vote, and I have never seen such a voter turnout today than I have on, at the middle school up here at Piney Branch. There were lines going on for, seemed to be for blocks. People couldn't wait to register their vote, and it felt so good to see people out there doing that. I also want to thank Terry and Joyce Siemens for helping people in our building, Franklin Apartments, to be, in the other areas, to be getting back and forth to the polls. There must have been over 100 people from our building, I heard, that got out there to vote, and it was so great. So also, also I wanted to, an idea I have for the inaugural balls, I think we should call it the Obama Jama, you know, Tacoma Park Obama Jama. Yep, and, but it says on my shirt, you know, what does it say here? Yes, we can? Well, I think we should change it to, oh, yes, we did. Because a lot of people have finally got up and used their activism to show that we can do it when we have to do it, you know? That's what activism shows, we can do, you know? And I think it's a really great thing to remember that next time we have to vote. And also, I think we should be getting everybody out there who hasn't registered the vote yet to register the vote, so we can do the same thing year after year, month after month, so we can keep our government where we want it, you know? And another thing, too, is just because we've got Barack Obama in office does not mean we have, we can just sit back in our laurels and say we did it, because it's not done yet. We still have people on the streets. We still have an economy that's tanked down the toilet. We still have a war that's raging like a 20-hour fire over in the Middle East, and we still have, you know what, a trillion-dollar debt that we have to work on. So we still have a lot to do yet. Just because we've got Obama in, that's just one step in the right direction. We've got to continue on as activists. You get other people active, and other people aware of the world around them. If we can do that, Tacoma Park can lead the way, and I think we can do it. So, yes, we have not done the job yet, but we have shown that we can do it. And yes, we can, and yes, we did. So, and I, when I finally get down to see George Bush packing his junk up and getting out of there, then I'll be happy. Okay, well, I think we should tell everybody, that's the importance of voting. We did it, we will do it, and we will do it again. Tacoma Park will lead the way. Thank you very much. And yes, yes, I think we should try to keep those mailboxes in. One idea I have of moving the mailbox at Franklin Apartments inside the building lobby so that the elderly people don't have to walk on the ice and mail their letters. Thank you very much. We will rule, peaceful rule.
Thank you. Is somebody else who'd like to make public comment?
I've got to sit down again.
Okay. If there's nobody else, the next item is the city manager's comments.
Two brief items. I'm at your places at the diocese this evening. Is a copy of the city's continuity of operations plan, often referred to as a coup, by Chief Ricucci, had shared with me that several councilmembers had expressed interest in seeing the document, so he had asked that I forward that to you. The only other item I have is just to note that the bids for the auditorium project for the design services were received today. We received seven bids for architectural services, and staff is in the process of reviewing those, and we'll have more information for the council next Monday.
Sounds like people are interested in finding work. Thank you. Any questions? Okay, we'll move to the first item on our regular meeting agenda, which is the resolution regarding the Purple Line. Would somebody like to introduce that, and then we can discuss it?
Move.
Moved by Councilmember Wright, seconded by Councilmember Robinson. Cat was up here grabbing tongues. If I can first just point out the main parts of this agenda, there are a lot of whereas is, but I'm going to just note the, a couple of the therefores that give the sense of this, which is that we urge the state to proceed with the submission of the full length of the Purple Line to the Fred of Trans administration and to work for the funding and construction in the near term. We urge Secretary of Transportation to select the medium investment light rail transit option. We urge acquisition of sufficient right-of-way along University Boulevard to enable the future installation of wide sidewalks shaded by trees and buffered from traffic. We urge the use of grass tracks in areas such as to come along the crossroads and Long Branch, those are in the middle of the right-of-way. And finally, we urge consideration of the through, right, 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 turn intersection design to minimize the width of University Boulevard and New Hampshire Avenue at the crossroads. So that's the main gist of what we have on the table. Are there any comments from the council? Councilmember Barry.
Yes, good evening, everyone, and Suzanne, thank you for coming. One important constituency in my area, the Crossroads Development Authority, which if very forthrightly supports the Purple Line, but raised some concerns that we're maybe getting a little bit ahead of the trolley car, and their specific concern was is that some of the whereas is go beyond the mere support of the mode of transportation itself and venture into areas that members of the CDA and the non-city sanctioned entity that has been created recently, the X Roads Group, feel encroaches or impinges on areas such as the right-of-way acquisition that are still a matter of some debate and concern or multiple perspectives. And so before I can support the resolution as it's currently presented, I'd like to give those folks an opportunity to point out specifically their concern with the draft as presented, and then to have you, Suzanne, if you will, respond to those concerns. I think that would be a good way to begin our discussion tonight, and would be very enlightening to the rest of the council. So how would you like to proceed? Irwin could come forward, if that is appropriate.
If I can just find out if there's any other council comments at this point, and then we can take a public comment, and then we'll have a chance to come back with anything we need to. Councilmember Wright.
I just had one question to sort of fully understand the right, right turn. So you're, instead of being able to go across, you turn right, and then there's a loop back through?
Basically, you drive across the intersection, and then you turn right through the, around the block, and so then you go back through the intersection in the direction that you need.
You go all the way around the whole block?
It's like, it's a little... Well, it depends on how that gets designed, and that's still to be worked out. It's essentially, it's, yes, essentially an at-grade cloverleaf design, but on regular blocks, so that the object is to not have one or two left turn lanes in each direction, which then you've got that extra 20 feet or 25 feet of road width.
I guess I would be a little concerned if, well, two things, if it's a true block, and then you're driving a lot of traffic down into neighborhoods, and you're a little concerned about that, and then if it's, if it's just a cut-through maybe in the front of someone's parking lot, I would be concerned that that actually creates another roadway that a pedestrian has to traverse to, so.
Right.
I'm not an expert, traffic expert, but those are sort of my two logical concerns.
Sure. Those are things that certainly has been looked through with the sector plan meetings. The concept is that you're not cutting through a parking lot and having an extra crossing, but that is either around the blocks that exist now, which primarily are commercial on the edges, or especially as redevelopment occurs, that it's appropriately designed so that it's a commercial edges on both sides, so that you're not having negative impacts on residential areas. You know, that is very important. I don't know that, given your suggestions, Councilmember Barry, I'm not sure that I want to go into the details right now. Why don't I relate, listen to the other comments, and then I'll go through, because I, there are some points that I'd like to raise about that.
Great. And then the second point I just wanted to make is, you know, people have talked about the difference between the cost of the light rail versus the DRT, and have suggested that there isn't that much of a difference, and in terms of travel times, and so I, this is my math, I looked at the numbers that are here, and these are the latest numbers provided by the MTA.
That's correct.
Yeah. Yep. So if you look at, from Langley, you know, Tacoma Langley to Bethesda, the VRT is 31.9 minutes. If you look at the light rail, it's 25.2 minutes. So it's a six point, you know, 6.7 or 6 minutes and 40 seconds difference, which is, you know, it means the train's going to be 25% slower. To me, that's actually pretty significant, and I think will, makes a significant decrease in the quality of the experience, and, I mean, the ridership numbers bear it out, but it just seems to me worth it for the extra money to actually truly have a fast way to get across.
And if I'd like, and if you don't mind, not only is that the case, but the interspersing of the buses with regular traffic means that if there is a traffic congestion problem, that would be a much longer difference.
Any other comments from the council? Councilmember Snipper.
I thank you for all the work you've put into this resolution, and I certainly support the Purple Line as the council always support, I think unanimously in the past, and I'm really encouraged that the new administration at the federal level may certainly put greater emphasis on this type of transportation as opposed to the roadways, although I would have to agree with Councilmember Barry that it may be premature to include some of the commitments to specific designs that haven't really been vetted with the public yet, and...
I'm prepared to talk about that, but I'd like to wait for the other comments.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, is there any public comment on the proposed resolution regarding the Purple Line?
Irwin Mack, Executive Director, Collin Crossroads, Mr. Mayor, City Manager, Council Members, it's not possible to live within the three-minute limit, given the extent of the huge investment of time, monies, but I'm privileged to represent some $200 million worth of commercial investment, not only in Montgomery County, Tacoma Park, but in Prince George's County, and at the intersection of University and Riggs Road. I had left before you a one, a single sheet, which I'd like to read into the record, and I will do so rapidly, and then we can engage in discussion, should you wish to do so. Number one, there's no significant objection to a light rail Purple Line by anyone. Two, there's a significant concern about the threefold involvement in the crossroads by, A, MTA, the Purple Line sponsors, B, sector plan by the Maryland National Capital Park and Plan Commission of both counties, C, SHA roadways, because of the obvious inconsistencies of the proposed use of roadways, sidewalks, landscaping, and the intrusion on existing commercial properties proposed by those three entities in the immediate, near, and distant future. Three, being concerned about these inconsistencies caused the formation of the X Roads Committee. That's an X with the word roads behind it. Call the X Roads to distinguish this group of property owners' managers from the existing crossroads property owners' managers. The X Roads Committee represents all the property owners' managers having commercial interests in the actual crossroads in both Montgomery County and Prince George's County, as well as significant property in the proximity of University Boulevard and Riggs Road. Four, the inconsistencies mentioned above caused the X Roads Committee to request a special meeting with representatives of the three entities for the purpose of strongly urging that they compare notes, as it were, and bring their stated differences together so as to permit the X Roads owners' managers to relate to a consistent proposal. Five, the X Roads Committee expresses its concern about the lack of communication by the staff at Tacoma Park to the members of the X Roads in the preparation of Resolution Number 2008-XX, and therefore respectfully strongly urges that the specific items to be mentioned will be deferred or set aside until such time as responsible discourse can take place between the staff at Tacoma Park and the X Roads members. Six, mention is made in Resolution Number 2008-XX of support for various plans as though final decisions have been made and accepted by the X Roads property owners' managers when no such support has been recorded. Seven, it must not be the effect on said that there is a willingness on the part of the X Roads members to carefully consider the values proposed by these three entities, yet recognizing the legal and financial incursions made on them. Finally, there exists a puzzlement as to the need to bring so much of the sector plans into this resolution, when much work still needs to be done to bring about a consensus that can be supported in the main. Therefore, the request to set aside those specific points itemized until further discussion can be had between city staff and the X Roads property owners' managers. Specifically, Mr. Mayor, council members, I have these to be marked on your sheets, which unfortunately are not numbered 1 through 10 on each sheet, but I'll refer to the specific items on each page. I have the six pages in front of me. Page one, no exceptions as of this time. Page two, if you count from the top to bottom, points 10 and 11. Page three, however, all points 1 through 10. Page four, points 2, 4, 10, and 11. I can repeat those, and I'll be happy to share this with Ms. Ludlow afterwards. Page five, none as of this time. Page six, points 3, 4, and 5. In addition to the record I just presented, I was given, actually asked, to make a presentation on behalf of a property in Prince George's County, which is part of the X Roads, and I will share it as you have it there because there are some unique points being made. The need for more parking referred to in the draft resolution whereas is clauses at page four will be further exacerbated if the state goes forward with its current transit center design. The current design calls for removal of 97 of the 419 existing parking spaces at the Langley Park Shopping Center. This is the shopping center where the Taco Bell exists, and where the transit center is intended to go. The state does not plan to replace a single one of those spaces, and also is providing no space where transit riders can be dropped off or picked up. Additionally, the shopping center will lose significantly more existing spaces if it is forced to install onsite traffic controls to keep transit center riders and bus drivers from parking their cars in the shopping center parking lot. There is no on-street or public parking in the area to accommodate these lot, lost parking spaces. We strongly, and this is the owners of the reliable properties at that shopping center, we strongly oppose the therefore paragraph number three proposed on page six calling for acquisition of additional University Boulevard right-of-way. Additional right-of-way on the north side of University would cut through our anchor tenant Wright-Aid store and would also bisect the proposed transit center. Prince George's County Planner, Ovea Douglas, has previously stated that if additional right-of-way were to be sought, it would not be pursued unless an individual property owner sought to redevelop its site. We have also been advised that Montgomery County does not want any further expansion of the University Boulevard right-of-way on its south side of the road. Tacoma Park planning staff was in attendance at both of the recent meetings where these statements were made. There is not enough information available to support the therefore paragraph numbers four and five recommendations at page six promoting the use of "grass tracks," in quotes, and a quote "through right, right, right" design of the University-New Hampshire crossroads intersection. Neither the mode, design, nor final alignment to stop locations have yet been chosen for the Purple Line. Also, the state has not yet responded to how the intersection design would affect its proposed transit center and travel, bus travel times. In the absence of this crucial information, we do not support either of these two recommendations. I'm honored to bring these concerns to you in the spirit of collegiality and wishing that every good thing could happen, not only in the city of Tacoma Park, but specifically at the crossroads, which desperately needs some reconfiguration to bring into a sense of identity which it had been missing for years. And I'd be pleased to make myself available at such time, or to request the city staff to meet with the members of the X Roads, who would be delighted to take such time as would be necessary to cover the points expressed that are concerned.
Thanks. Is there other public comment?
Hello, I'm Lori Kelly. I live on Grant Avenue in the city, and I've been a member of Purple Line Citizens Committee, and I've also attended the community workshops, and I mainly want to speak to the need for the Purple Line, light rail versus express bus. First of all, the majority of the working-class people living in the whole Tacoma Park area do use public transportation. Most of them use Metro Bus, regular buses, which are slow, and sometimes they have to transfer, take two or three buses to get where they're going. The Purple Line would allow commuters to travel west to Silver Spring, Bethesda, or east to the University of Maryland or New Carrollton. What would be faster about the Purple Line train is that the trains will probably have dedicated lanes versus the bus having shared lanes. Okay, also, Purple Line is much cleaner for the air, the water, and the soil. Okay, also, purple line is much cleaner for the air, the water, and the soil. The purple line will bring a Tacoma-Langley Transit Center, which has been much needed for many, many years. I started with concerns of pedestrian safety, getting riders off the street because they cross mid-block, they don't use crosswalks, they just get on or off the bus wherever the bus stops are, and there are eight major bus stops around the crossroads on University and New Hampshire. Okay, the purple line will have three stops nearby, Long Branch, University Avenue, the crossroads with New Hampshire, and also, not far away, crossroads with Riggs Road. Just addressing what you were discussing about parking, I don't know if parallel parking is in the plans, but that could somehow replace maybe some of the shopping center parking lot spaces that are lost. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Is there other public comment on this resolution? Okay, Suzanne, do you want to address some of the points that have been raised?
Sure. I guess the first thing I'd like to say is I've worked on planning projects for many years, and some of them have been these very long, drawn-out planning processes that take many years. One of the things that's very difficult for people, I think, is to recognize the point where it goes from a concept plan to something that's a little harder, something that's a little more firm, and we're at that point now. The proposals, the information that's been put out by the Maryland Transit Administration identifies six build alternatives and then two other alternatives that they are required to look at if they don't build a purple line. Each of those alternatives has cost estimates, it has fairly detailed information in the background about how much land would need to be taken and how much construction would need to be done for these various options. And we're at the point where a recommendation as to which of these six alternatives is best needs to be made by us to go forward to the Maryland Transit Administration and the other bodies that make comments on it. One of the things that, I did have a chance to talk with Mr. Mack this morning at length, and I appreciate the concern that we're talking a good amount of detail about right-of-way widths and that kind of thing, and it's not measured out, but there is quite a lot of detail in the whereas clauses of the resolution. And that information is to try to do a couple things to protect the city of Tacoma Park. The first is, under the proposals that are included in this document, the amount of right-of-way that is proposed to be used for University Boulevard is probably a bit too narrow to be able to have comfortable sidewalks. We're talking, you know, five-foot sidewalks, you know, very close to the curb on University Boulevard, and that's simply not a comfortable environment alongside essentially a highway. And it's not the kind of thing that we have envisioned in terms of having really healthy commercial shopping mixed-use area around a transit center, something that's attractive, something that's walkable, something that's usable, something that people will come to for. And so we've looked at what is the right amount for the pedestrian access. In addition, in some segments along University Boulevard, there's these access roads that go along parallel University Boulevard, which we often use for parking. Some of the options that MTA has proposed, especially the bus rapid transit options, would remove any way for parking along the curb in off-peak times. We've found for a healthy economic development district that it's very useful to have some off-peak parking available near commercial businesses. When, on the flip side, we don't want to have too much land taken away from the shopping centers. And so one of the things that's been, I think, very proactive of the folks who've been working with the sector plans are thinking about what can be done to keep the right-of-way on University and New Hampshire to the smallest walkable amount while still keeping the shopping center whole and keeping a wide enough pedestrian way. The proposal that has come through in the discussions has been this scheme to do the through-right-right-intersection, which hasn't been completely sketched out in terms of how it goes around, but the concept, which is that we basically prohibit left turns at the intersection and have other ways to facilitate good traffic movement at the Tacoma-Langley intersection, is important so that we can minimize that road width, and that's why this is here. Now, it's true that we're at a point where we're trying to decide which comes first, the sector plan or this plan or whatever. I think that it's the right thing to do, to be proactive, to say from the Tacoma Park's perspective, for what makes us kind of the healthiest community in many different ways, what's the right amount, and give that direction to the state. The CDA and the X Roads Committee is right, that they have been looking at plans that, you know, three different kinds of measurements of what University Boulevard is, and as a property owner, I can imagine that that's distressing, you're trying to figure out your financial impacts and that kind of thing. But rather than wait and react to something after it's been adopted by the Secretary of Transportation, I think that it does make sense for the city to make a recommendation as to what would be the best thing for the health of our community, and that's why this information is there. You may wish to alter how those things are stated or not include them, but I do think that to not have that information ends up being harmful both to pedestrians and to our property owners of the shopping centers, which I think both will lose in terms of coming up with the right amount of land that is reflected in the plans and in the financial estimates that go forward to the Federal Transit Administration. The next step of this, if the Secretary of Transportation picks an alternative and says, yes, we're moving forward on the purple line, is to identify how much money the state is putting forward. And so they're going to come up with fairly detailed cost proposals and show what the contribution is from the state. So, it feels like a concept plan, but it's not there, it's really kind of moved into this next stage, and our comments at this point are important and have weight. I really appreciate that I get calls from the Maryland Transit Administration staff and from Montgomery County officials wondering what our position will be. And so, well, we'll share it with you when we get it, but clearly there is interest because we are a key portion of the purple line route, and we will have a large benefit from economic development, and a variety of sources are looking at this area as one of the prime reasons for having the purple line in the first place, is the Tacoma-Langley area is a tremendous beneficiary of a purple line, and that's part of the selling of the purple line to the larger community. Just a couple other things I want to mention, there are tremendous environmental advantages to having purple line. As I've gone through these reports, the numbers of vehicles and especially vehicle miles traveled per day, they get taken off the road with a light, medium investment light rail, it's really remarkable, and I just imagine how important that will be to the health of our community and our region. The grass tracks, you know, is a helpful and attractive aspect also of that. And one of the things that I was thinking about as I looked at this was that a number of years ago, the Tacoma Metro was built, and the impact on the livability of Tacoma Park really increased. It serves many of our residents, it's increased property values, especially Ward One, and is quite a beneficiary of the Tacoma Metro, and I think about how nice it would be to have that benefit for Wards Five and Six and the interconnectedness for our whole community. And I think that it would be a real shame if we weren't pushing hard on this to help our economy and our livability kind of over the long run in Tacoma Park. Just to reiterate some of the information, the series of public hearings this month, Mayor Williams is scheduled to testify on November 22nd at the hearing at the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Campus of Montgomery College in Falcon Hall at 1:00 p.m., and we'll be preparing testimony based on your direction for that hearing.
And if you could just say a little bit about what, I guess, what the course of action is after those hearings, you may have done that a little bit, but what I want to do is get a sense of, we weigh in at the hearings, but then there are other opportunities for comment as the process goes forward.
The public hearing comment period for these alternatives is until January 14th with the Maryland Transit Administration, and so you can email or send letters to the Maryland Transit Administration, we have that information in a variety of places, how to contact people.
And if we had further comments or clarifications?
Well, we can always do that, but let me just go through...
But are you talking about the public record is open until...
The public record is open until January 14th. Now, the importance of the testimony on November 22nd is that it then goes to the Montgomery County and Prince George's County planning boards. They're making their comments and doing their studies to submit their comments. That information then goes to the two county councils, which will make their comments, to the MTA as well. We have found in the past that we're most effective when we're at the beginning level so that the various planning boards and county councils can incorporate our comments, and we don't have to do that, but it tends to be the most effective way to be part of a larger effort. I know one of the things that Councilmember Leventhal has made a big point of is that we do need to stand strong across Montgomery County on the purple line, and so he's been urging very strongly that there be a lot of cooperation among the various parties so that there's a strong end statement to the Maryland Transit Administration. The Montgomery County Council will be getting their comments in late January after the January 14th comment deadline, simply because they can't get it before then, and the Secretary of Transportation has said he would wait for their comments, obviously it's very important. So there's a little bit of wiggle room. Nevertheless, the Secretary of Transportation has said that he would make his decision in February or March of 2009, and then it goes very rapidly, if it's to proceed, to the Federal Transit Administration in spring. So, that's the schedule.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Come this way.
Suzanne, I'm trying to envision the right, 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 going all four directions, and have you given thought to that, for traffic going all four directions?
Yes, I mean, it does, all four quadrants do work in that regard.
Okay.
And, you know, I think that one of the objects, of course, is that the whole, that the properties on all four quadrants get redeveloped so that they're more kind of transit-friendly and walkable, and so even though they would work pretty much as it is now, they would work better as redevelopment occurring.
I see. I mean, an example is you're going west on University and you want to go south on New Hampshire. If you're coming from the University of Maryland, you want to head towards the district, want to make a left turn, but instead you'd go into the parking lot, kind of circle around the transit center.
You'd go on Lebanon Street, you'd go around the backside of Rite Aid and around, just like the way the buses go.
Big block, okay. You wouldn't go through around the transit center that were built and so forth.
No, you would not.
Okay. Just trying to get clarity on that. Thank you.
And if I can just add on to that, is a, I would imagine that a potential benefit of that to the businesses is that it gets more traffic to those businesses.
Well, it does, and people see them, you know, from different sides. The advantage in redevelopment is that you don't just have businesses facing out towards University or New Hampshire, but you've also got businesses facing towards Lebanon Street or whatever other street has made the arrangement for that roundabout so that you end up with a healthier viability of a variety, it's the 100% corner kind of concept, you've got multiple ways of reaching and going directly past businesses.
Suzanne, I just had a follow-up question related to that. Are there sometimes, are those sometimes used only during peak hours, or is that too confusing to people?
You know, I don't know the answer to that. The only times I've seen them have been as a permanent version, unless you've got the overhead sign indicators that are lighted that can be changeable, and I think those sometimes are tough. If you think about this intersection with a light rail train going through the middle, having people taking left turns in front of it and that kind of thing, starts to, I think people would understand at that intersection why left turns are difficult, and, you know, so on that particular intersection, I can see this working. I don't normally recommend this because, you know, people do, you know, it takes a lot of, it does take a lot of configuration, but on this particular intersection, it does make sense.
Okay.
How many cookies are in a package? Is what he seems to be concerned about.
He doesn't want to take the last one.
I do think that we have a chicken and egg problem here, or the cart before the trolley, and I think that we would probably be safer at this juncture if, rather than to get into the specific recommendations, we looked instead at articulating some principles. The first principle, it seems to me, is pedestrian safety. The second principle is enhancing the commercial district, and the third principle is making sure that everybody is talking to each other. And the X Roads Committee is relatively new, I only learned about it on Saturday, and it seems to me it's an important group because these are the major property holders as well as the secondary property holders, and I can't see how we would be successful at this point if you've got these folks erupting up and down University and that part of New Hampshire because they feel that they have not been properly consulted, or there are right-of-way and other kinds of issues that they would find not in keeping with our principle of enhancing the commercial area. So I think that by strongly supporting the purple line light rail, we accomplish the main goal, which is to go on record with that support, but I think at this point we would be better off if we avoided these specifics, realizing that later we can weigh in up to January and maybe beyond once the businesses have had a chance to catch up with the process. And then I think the second important point here is that Tacoma Park play even more so its traditional strength, which is to act as a catalyst in bringing the entities together. We have no money of our own, at least not this point, to contribute, but we certainly have ideas, and since it's happening in our most important business district, our largest one and the one that generates the most property taxes, we have vested an important interest here, and to make sure the two counties and that the state are consulting with the new business group in particular, but also with the established one. So I would prefer at this point, and I would encourage you and my council colleagues as well, to go for the more general principles rather than the specifics at this point, and to redouble our efforts at bringing all of the business entities and the government partners that we have together to make sure that everybody's fully informed and fully on board. We may not always agree on every point, and I don't think that should be our ultimate goal, because maybe we will, our views may diverge from certain aspects of the business community and even some of our partners, but I think it's important to explore those areas of agreement as well as articulate the areas of disagreement as we move forward between now and January.
Councilmember Clay.
Well, I support the purple line, although I think that bus rapid transit is more cost-effective and more flexible. Unfortunately, it's hard to rally as much support for the buses as it is for the... Unfortunately, it's hard to rally as much support for the, for the buses as it is for the light rail. People like to ride on the trains. But I guess I, I would agree that we would move forward with general principles. I mean, everyone likes the idea of the train, except the people who have it in, you know, their front yard or in their business. The, whose proposal, I, I didn't get a packet tonight in my, in my stuff, which I'm sorry, I didn't realize until I got it all down here, but whose proposal is it to do the through right, right, right?
That's the discussion that's been coming out of the Tacoma Laylee Sector Plan Process with the various community meetings and-
Okay. It seems to me that if I were a resident faced with, well, first, I, I, you know, University Avenue and, and New Hampshire Avenue is a tough intersection and, and can stall me sometimes 45 minutes on what is ordinarily a 20-minute trip. The prospect of having people make all that, spend all that extra time circulating, you know, I grew up in California, so I'm, I'm used to the cloverleaf intersection. I get that, but that's elevated. This is going to be flat. And if I were coming from University and wanting to go to the district, I'd turn on Riggs Road and come over to East West Highway. And if I were coming down University and wanted to, you know, turn left or right, if I wanted to turn right at New Hampshire, I guess I could, but I'd probably go Piney Branch. I'd find some other way to go, other than through that intersection. And people like to drive a straight line to their, to their location, if they can. And we, we, we learn from the various traffic studies that psychologically, people don't like to go backwards or sideways, although they do like to keep moving. That's, I'm not, I'm not seeing how that's going to work. And then the other thing is, I think at some point, we're probably going to have to provide support to a deci, well, the entire process of the Purple Line, at some point, leaders are going to have to stand up, and they're going to have to say, "You win and you don't." And this Purple Line is going to go in front of your house, and it's going to go through your business, and I think that the, the approach that Doug suggests, where we start by driving it through with principles first, before we necessarily see, you know, all of, all of the other components of that and the nitty-gritty, will, will make it easier for us, as leaders tend to say, "Look, here's the principles that we all laid out and that we agreed to. In the end, this is the route and the decision that makes the most sense, and here's the maximum amount of mitigation we can provide to the people that are affected, without really driving up the costs, or essentially changing the structure of the, of the, of the solution." So that's my comment here.
Councilmember Simmons.
I'd just like, Suzy, some feedback on the suggestion that we focus the resolution on principles rather than the specifics that are in this document now.
Thanks. I think that having the principles listed is very important.
Do you think it would be of benefit to the state planners to have those in lieu of the specifics that are in this resolution tonight?
I do think that something more specific than general principles will be more useful. It doesn't need to be to the level that's in this document. The, the important portion, I think, is to give enough direction to the state planners, so they can precisely estimate how much land that they will need to take, how much, you know, construction that they need to do. And so what I would recommend is that at, as soon as possible, there be a fairly specific concept about what the correct amount of right-of-way should be for University and New Hampshire Avenue in Tacoma Park. I think that the, the easier way for the state to do is to be as chintzy as possible. They obviously are looking at money. And where that hurts is it hurts for pedestrian safety, and it hurts for having a comfortable commercial district. And so there's a certain point where I think it needs to be wider than that. The, the downside is that if they budget a certain amount and, and plan for a certain configuration, and then because everybody has this outcry, "Well, this isn't sufficient pedestrian way," then they end up taking more from, from the Tacoma Park side of the, of the University Boulevard in particular. One of the principles that MTA has been using in coming up with its estimates is that they don't want to take any buildings. One of the things that's remarkable is that even in the strongest of, the kind of the most destructive of these options, it only takes 12 buildings for the full length between Bethesda and New Carrollton, which really is quite remarkable through adult community.
Is one of those the Rite Aid?
And the Rite Aid is not to be affected, and they wouldn't affect it. The proposal then would be to take it more from the Tacoma Park side of University Boulevard, so it's not equally shared. You know, when they say expanding the right-of-way, they don't, it can go this way, it can go that way.
Sure, sure.
So as to, right, so as to best fit and to minimize the expense. But what we prefer not to-
So we might have, we might have a principle in a revised resolution that would address those types of concerns.
Exactly. And I think we, I think, you know, if, if that's something that you would support, I think it would be really important.
And I, just lastly, wanted to compliment you on your selection of sweaters for this evening.
You know what? I was so happy. My husband had hidden this in our coat closet, and by, I'm sure by accident, and I found it the other day and thought it was quite timely. I was very glad to, to see it again.
You're not the only one.
Yes, right, we're trying to be coordinated here. And, and I noticed the mayor was coordinated as well.
Other comments?
How would you like to proceed?
Well, let me, I have one comment, which is, I was focused on the "therefore's." I always look at those as the meat of the resolution. How, how do people generally feel about "whereas's" in resolutions? I look at those as kind of statement of background.
Well, it sets the stage, certainly.
But some of the reasons here are, Stephen, it just backgrounds are kind of more descriptive. So maybe it should be in the "therefore's" and "whereas's."
So would people like to, we could, we, we need a resolution by, like-
Next week.
12 days from now.
That's correct.
So we could make some revisions to it and bring it back next week, but we need to do it next week.
Yes.
And we could see a draft of that by midweek, so we could, if you have any comments, back to you through email, so that we don't have, to just be reviewing it at the meeting tomorrow?
Right, I would try to get it out.
Which, which we did with this one, too.
You know, we don't have work tomorrow, so there's a little bit of a delay, but I would try to get it out as quickly as possible.
That's how Mr. Mack was prepared for the meeting tonight.
Well, and, and, you know, one of the things, I mean, I, they sent the draft out to the CDA and a number of other folks in advance, so that they had an opportunity to, to really talk about it. And I'd just wait doing that again.
Okay, so, given that we have a resolution on the table, would somebody like to move to table it till next week?
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of tabling it until next Monday night, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, it's tabled till next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is the Consent Agenda. There are three items on the Consent Agenda, a single reading ordinance, authorizing a contract.
No.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
We're booking there?
Yes. Second reading ordinance authorizing budget number two. City manager, want to make any comments on the second reading?
No, the only thing I would just note for the council, since first reading, is in discussions with the Public Works Director, it does appear that we may be looking at a lower-cost recycling truck than what was reflected in the first reading ordinance that you approved last week. So if you'll note on the version that's included in the agenda packet, that amount has been changed from just over $249,000 to a more generic figure of approximately $210,000, just so we're not appropriating more money from the equipment replacement reserve than is necessary. The Public Works Director feels that that amount will be sufficient, and there will be an ordinance actually purchasing that truck before the council next week. And that was the only change since first reading.
Okay, and can you remind us what the total general contingency amount is, which is 1/2% of revenues, but is that about?
It's roughly about $97,000.
Okay. So this would be using? $23,000 of the, maybe $7,000?
Correct.
Okay.
The only other thing I would just note very quickly is, I think last week, there was a question about how general contingency account monies could be used. In the cover sheet for the first reading ordinance, I had referenced unanticipated operating expenses. That was actually, the operating was my addition, it's not what actually is in the city charter. I did review this issue with the city attorney's office, and they're very comfortable with the use of the general contingency account monies for this purpose.
Okay. Would somebody like to introduce the second reading?
Introduce it. I'll introduce it. Second.
So that was moved by Councilmember Siemens and seconded by Councilmember Robinson. Any further discussion?
I just have a question back to the truck. So would the truck be, would all recycling be co-mingled together, or would it be separate?
I think that's actually, I mean, I guess, Public Works Director could either address it this evening, that is an issue I think she would prepare to discuss with the council next week. So I'll, I'll leave that to the council's discretion, whether you'd like her to come forward now and make some comments, or just discuss the matter next week.
I guess the, the point I would just bring up is that, you know, we spend a lot of time gathering recycled materials, and the equipment you buy might have an impact on how you operationalize or actually collect that material, and that you may be able to do it more efficiently, and so there may be a cost benefit to that, where we would then save on staff dollars. And knowing that budgets are tight, we need to be thinking about those sorts of trade-offs. I'm not an expert in recycling. I get a lot of comments from residents about different ways they could, it could be done. You know, I think in the past, the county has used blue bins, like our yellow bins, for paper. And the payoff of that versus paper bags, and what's more efficient, and the waste of everyone having to have those paper bags also. So I, I just think we need to think through those things, and if the, I just don't want to be in a situation later on where I'm told, "Oh, we can't do that because we bought this truck." So that, that's my only.
The, I mean, ultimately, I, that decision will be the council's when you approve or don't approve the ordinance that's before you next week, purchasing the truck. I think the only decision this evening for the council, just as a reminder, is whether or not you wish to appropriate money. Clearly, depending on what type of truck you, you elect to purchase, that may have some impact on whether the amount in this ordinance is correct or not, but that's not something that could not be amended at a later date either.
I think it would be helpful if the Public Works Director could just tell us what, what the intent with this truck is, given the amount of money that she's looking at, so that we have a sense of that. It may be an issue, it may not be an issue.
Yeah, not to spend too much time on it, lest you hear the whole presentation for next week, but it's actually because it's in a state of flux right now. We have in the past relied heavily on Montgomery County for processing facility. Basically, the county's processing facility in Gaithersburg is what we use for 90% of our material. We also use some private haulers. They are dedicated to a segregated split-stream recycling, where they have got a paper or a fiber stream, and a co-mingled bottles and canister stream. That is not going to change in the foreseeable future for Montgomery County. They're invested in that, their contract, collection contracts, which go for seven years, and they're about to go out to bid again in February for another seven years. All are predicated on a segregated recycling collection stream. Jurisdictions around us are taking a slightly different take. Prince George's County has gone to a single stream, what's called a single stream processing. Basically, everything is put into one container, your bottles and cans, your paper, all your recyclers, together in one. And then the processing facility is built to manage that type of mixed-together type of materials. Howard County, Anaronda County, Prince George's County, they have all gone to a single stream processing facility. Montgomery County is sort of the lone holdout in terms of the segregated stream. And we can get into the details of that pro and con, and I could talk for hours about that. But at any rate, that's the reality of the situation. Oftentimes jurisdictions go to single stream as a way to enhance participation, make it simple for residents to participate, and increase the amount of materials that are ultimately collected. However, with that, you've got a high degree of waste. Basically, when you're mixing things together, you're going to contaminate some stuff that's going to end up in the waste stream. All things being equal, we're currently in negotiations with jurisdictions outside of Montgomery County, to see if they'll contract with the city for allowing us to use their single stream processing facility. We've gotten very favorable responses so far from both Prince George's County, Howard County, and Anaronda County. So we're currently in negotiations. All those facilities are run by Waste Management. Montgomery County's facility is not, it's run by a separate corporation. That said, one of the biggest issues for us to determine is the cost of a truck for, for collecting with a segregated stream. Basically, your bottles and your paper separately is much more expensive, to the tune of $40,000 to $60,000 more expensive than a truck where you can use basically a traditional trash truck, a rear-load packer. Everything goes in altogether, gets compacted, you can carry a lot of material, a lot of weight, and it's significantly less expense. So we're, we've got everything out sort of on a balance sheet, we're looking at the pros and cons, and, and we're still in a state of great discussion amongst our staff and amongst the department about which way to go. On the surface, it looks much less expensive for us to buy a traditional rear-load truck and negotiate with a vendor to do the single stream processing. So if I had to guess at this point, that's the direction that I think we're likely to go, given the significant savings it would have in equipment. That being said, I don't see any staff savings at this point. We're a fairly lean organization in terms of sanitation force, and so there isn't any potential savings in reduction of staff needed for those collection vehicles, because they're all staffed to sort of two and a half people per truck. That can't change, no matter what, so I don't, I don't see any, any reduction in our staff size in the sanitation division in order to take advantage of the single stream recycling.
Is another variable the time it takes to get the trucks to whatever facility?
Yes, the facility in Prince George's County is the most attractive to us. It's over on Ritchie Road. It would be about the same amount of time as we currently use spending, going up to Gaithersburg, like different traffic patterns and issues like that to consider, but it's about equidistant.
So, do we have any further discussion? I think that information was helpful. Is there any public comment on this ordinance? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the second reading ordinance authorizing the budget amendment, please say aye. Roll call. Roll call. Please follow.
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Barry.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. We now get to the Consent Agenda. Councilmembers Siemens, just too many s's. Councilmember Siemens has requested that Consent Agenda, Consent Agenda Item A be pulled for discussion, which we will do as soon as we pass the remaining items, unless anybody wants to pull B or C. And if you do, then we got no Consent Agenda. Okay, so we have a Consent Agenda consisting of Items B and C, those are single reading ordinances, rescinding ordinances, and authorizing slight replacement ordinances. So all those in favor of the Consent Agenda, please say no. We have to do a, it's a single reading, we have to do a roll call of the Consent Agenda. Roll call, please call a roll.
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Barry.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. We now get to the Item A on the Consent Agenda, which is a single reading ordinance. We're going to contract for HVAC improvements to the 30- We're going to contract for HVAC improvements to the third floor of municipal building. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you. You know, this community prides itself on our environmental progressiveness, and yet we continue to do things with this building without spending a whole lot of time of looking at how we can make this a greener facility. And I wonder if, if we are taking a progressive step with the HVAC system we're ordering, if, or if this is something, an opportunity that we could maybe do better in making this a greener facility, and if we should be looking at this as just one part of a, a bigger process of moving this into a facility that uses less energy. And I guess that's a, that's a question, is, is this just more of the same in our energy use, or is this a, a step towards moving us into a more green facility?
If the Public Works Director would like to address that question.
Yeah, I share your concern, Councilmember Siemens, about energy use, not only in this facility, but in all the city facilities, and it's something I've spent a great deal of time and energy, not to be blunt, on, thinking about and working on and trying to dig up alternatives. Some of them are easy to grasp, and other them are a little more difficult. This building presents a challenge. One of the situations that we have in front of us right now is we've got a significant section of the third floor that is not comfortable to staff in the summer. And I've heard that loud and clear, and felt it myself. We currently have portable air conditioning units that are electric units that we plug in and to, to cool that section of the building. That is a significant waste of energy, as that's about the most expensive way to get supplemental cooling. So one of the things I can tell you without a doubt is to remove those portable units and put in a functioning system that's going to be far more energy efficient in the long term than what we've currently got. However, what we, what we've been advised by the folks that do this for a living, the mechanical engineers that have come in, evaluated our system, taken a look at sort of where we are with what we have, is that we've got some infrastructure within our building that's just not capable of meeting the cooling needs. Our chilling system in and of itself, the compressors, the swamp coolers, the fan units, they're able to do the job. The problem is our piping system between the units just is not of the age anymore that can move the quantity of coolant material from the chillers and the compressors to the fan coil units to get the cold air out. Their recommendation, and, and based on what I've seen, I, I strongly agree with it, is to basically take our air handlers up on the floor, the third floor, out of their misery, and replace them with rooftop heat pumps for the cooling capacity of the existing rear floor of the, the third floor. Heat pumps are generally an efficient model. These are all spec'd to meet Energy Star standards, so they're, they're compliant with Energy Star. They are efficient models. They do meet the recommended SEER and EER standards, so we are purchasing equipment that is deemed efficient. They'll basically provide the cooling that's needed in the back of that building. In addition, what we found is that the cable office, which uses a significant amount of equipment, a lot of cable equipment, a lot of computers, is hot all the time. And in fact, we've had problems because it's gotten so hot in there that it's fried some components. So it's a significant concern for us to keep that particular office, two rooms in particular, cool enough. And they're in a world of their own. They're not operating like the rest of the building, so they really need a separate system to sort of keep them cool and, and keep the equipment running. What's recommended there is a ductless air conditioning system that is specifically designed just for that space, sized just for that space, and is able to, to meet the needs of that space, not, and not any larger, not any smaller. So what you see before you is a proposal to add air conditioning in the areas that it's, that it's missing, remove our current portable systems, which are an energy drain. And then the next step, the next logical step will be to take a look at our existing infrastructure in this building and say, okay, we had a chiller system that used to do the whole building, now it's just down to maybe a half of what it used to, what it used to cool. And what do we need to do with that? One of the things I have shared information-wise is there was some wisdom back in nineteen ninety-six when we put in that chiller system. It's a very efficient system, which is one of the reasons that we chose it. And it is like no system I've ever seen, which most systems have a two-phase, you know, it can go low or you can go high. This actually has four different phases that it can jump to. So there's four fans, and you'll see them in the rear of the building when you come in. If you ever wonder what those four different fans are, those are the different phases.
That's not the one you hear here periodically?
Oh, this is the air handler that you hear here. It's, it's, it's a sound that you don't hear inside the building, but it basically works with the compressor and ramps up depending on the cooling needs of the building. So we have four fans, as well as three different swamp coolers. The swamp coolers are what reduce the humidity from the air. So we have a system that's really geared to step up, truly step up, and go from a low-neat situation to a moderate, to a more, to a more, to a higher situation. So I'm less concerned about the chiller system that we currently have being overloaded and oversized for this facility, because it really was designed to be able to be stepped up and phased based on the need. So in a traditional situation, if you had a chiller that was put in to cool this whole building, and now we've pulled different pieces off, and we're now cooling them with different rooftop units, you would end up with a system that goes on for fifteen minutes, off, on, off, on, and be an incredible waste of energy. We don't have that with our current system. We have a chiller that's really able to stay up at a, you know, at a moderate pace if it needs it, and then if we have those ninety or a hundred-degree days, it can ramp up again. That's not to say that we won't be taking a look at that. There may be a point at which it no longer becomes effective to have the type of chilling system that we've had in the building anymore.
All right, just two other real quick questions. One is, you, you said that the recommendation is, and you itemized some things for the third floor and the cable office, and those are the recommendations that are embodied in this purchase?
Yes.
And then secondly, what I'm understanding you to say is that we are not approving this to apply a Band-Aid that we would replace if we were to go to an energy-efficient redo of the HVAC, that this is something we would keep and we would just replace the other portions.
And in fact, the new systems in the building are largely cooled with rooftop units, so we'd be creating some consistency with the existing new structure.
It looks like Councilmember Clay wonders about the heating. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? Is there any public comment on this ordinance? Seeing none, roll call, clerk, please call a roll.
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Barry.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Stever.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. We will move to our work session item, which is the Safe Tacoma Progress Report. Get there in my packet. Would the city manager like to introduce this?
In May of this year, the council authorized the execution of a memorandum of understanding with Safe Tacoma Incorporated. One of the provisions of that memorandum of understanding was that no later than six months after the MOU was executed, is that Safe Tacoma would provide the council with a formal progress report, and that at that juncture, the council would provide direction to me, based on the progress report you're about to hear, whether or not I should initiate the disbursement of the balance of the funds that the council allocated. There are obviously representatives from Safe Tacoma here this evening, and I think I will just turn it over to Mr. Grimes, who's the president of Safe Tacoma.
Okay, and if I can just acknowledge the lesson that Ann C. Commissioner Green learned, which is if you keep your papers off of those microphones, then you won't hear scratching in the room.
I learned that lesson, too. Seth Grimes, I'm president of Safe Tacoma. We have with us Faith Wheeler, who is vice president, Sarah Green, who is secretary, Ronnie Miller, our operations manager, Andy Kellerman lurking in the audience, who is our treasurer, Hope Dan Mergner is a member of our advisory committee, and also a, an officer of the Conflict Resolution Center of Montgomery County, which is one of our program partners. We did have in the audience earlier this evening several representatives of the Tacoma Park Community Action Group, so I want to thank Diane Susan Norman, who were here, Joyce Siemens, who is still here. I don't think she will have anything to say, but she's here. Diane Barclay in particular participated in the help increase the peace program trainings that we ran about a year ago. So I, I will thank city manager Matthews for the introduction. So we're supposed to present a progress report toward our work plan, which was presented to you in May. I, I do want to start off with a quick personal note, which I wouldn't normally do. I had my bicycle stolen from the Tacoma Metro Station on Thursday. Someone cut my lock. Next time I'll get a better lock, better cable and all that. And I also want to note that my fourteen-year-old son Raphael knows one of the kids who was shot recently on Rideon. Raphael, for the last three years in middle school, rode Rideon past the Flower and Arles intersection twice a day to get to school. He still rides Rideon to get home. This, he wasn't victimized himself, but my point being, everyone in the community can potentially fall victim to crime of one sort or another, and that's motivated for being here. So our, our progress report does have five sections really, to correspond to five sections in the work plan. One of the sections is organizational, and we did put, as much as we thought was appropriate and written form for you to refer to, and I'm not going to read this or anything like that, just on the organizational front, to touch on high points. After receiving the council's authorization for the work plan and the budget through Chief Rupucci, we went ahead and engaged an operations manager, Ronnie Miller, whom we met in September at the session then. And we've done other steps according to the work plan to get an office, other organizational things to just get going as a, as an organization. Next is fundraising, which I skipped, section B here. Our work plan called for us to start work on fundraising for other grant sources than the city's around this time, and we're doing that. We expect to apply for a Maryland State grant in the coming weeks, and I would guess that Chief Rupucci is going to be applying for one for the SeaSafe program as well from the same source. And we've identified other sources, and we'll get to work on that. The meat of what we have to report on, of course, is programming, meat of your interest, and we have four program areas per the work plan. They were youth programming, which constitutes conflict resolution, youth development, youth offenders, and then also community engagement. Before turning it over to some of my colleagues, I'll mention on the youth offenders, there's a short section on that. That was programming that would target youth offenders to try to help them stay out of trouble once they've been into the juvenile justice system. That is not something that we had contemplated starting before now. We contemplated starting it toward the end of this year and the beginning of next year, so we don't have anything to say about that. For conflict resolution, I'll turn it over to Faith Wheeler.
Thank you, councilmembers. The conflict resolution program is really the first operational program that we engaged in, and we've started it off over a year ago with sponsoring three participants in an initial program that's already undergoing in Washington, and had a good result in as much as we had a stellar participant who became in the next workshop that we, that we ourselves sponsored in November. He was in fact an assistant facilitator, so that was quite a good outcome. So in November, and then again in February and March, we've held two workshops, ten participants each. In November, it was held at the Tacoma DC Community Center, and in February and March, it was held at the Tacoma Park Maryland Community Center. And this summer, this past summer, we held, we went into a different format really, and wanted to expand our reach and engage more people, more, more young people really. And so we held seven and eight-week sessions in the Tacoma DC Community Center, and also in the Tacoma Park Maryland Community Center, with programs, with sports campers, and also with counselors. Those were experiments. They were brand-new, helped to help increase the peace program, had not engaged in that kind of format before. The conflict resolution program is very experiential, and that seems to be a new notion to a number of people. I think people tend to expect something rather didactic, as though sitting in a classroom and having somebody lecture at you. This is completely different. It's totally experiential. And that, that notion, that format was, it took quite a while for the managers of the, of the particular community centers to understand. But it was a, they were nonetheless supportive and helpful, and eventually understood just what it was about. And the participants, in fact, I think benefited of, in spite of the fact that it was off to a little bit of a shaky start. I happened to run into one participant on the bus and struck up a conversation, and she was in a three-week nursing program, and she said, "Well, you know, a lot of people need this conflict resolution program." And it helped me a lot in my nursing, my nursing course, because I had to stop and think about how to deal with people instead of my usual way. And so I thought, well, that's a sample of one, and hopefully it's replicated by other participants as well. We do, we are looking forward to continuing with conflict resolution, the basic course, which is roughly two and a half days, perhaps in some different formats, splitting it in two, two sections. And then our idea basically is to be able to have a multiplier effect, so that we will produce trainers, or facilitators, I should say, in a training facilitators workshop, which is the second part of the conflict resolution program. And we hope to be doing that within the first half of next year. I have enough of a base, so people have gone through the basic training to, and interested in moving forward. In the, we're interested to know that in the February-March workshop held here in, in this building, eight of the ten participants said that they really would like to go on and take the training facilitators program. So that will help us expand our reach as we develop facilitators to conduct more of the conflict resolution programs. Thank you.
Let me, let me add about the summer programs. You'll see in this progress report toward the top of page four. We had our trainers Monica Magiesi and Jacob Stone, both of whom were affiliated at some points with Conflict Resolution Center of Montgomery County. Jacob was working there over the summer, and Monica had formerly. We had them write a, a, a report that included lessons learned from the experiences in the summer camp programs. It's a very frank report. We didn't include it in the agenda packet, but it is available on our website for you to read. They give some stats here about the goals that were published. I'll emphasize that it was a frank report, you might find it interesting reading. Next, let's, I'll assume that you'll have questions about everything after we're done, okay? Next, Ronnie, why don't you talk about youth development?
Okay, good evening. The youth programming plans that was outlined in the work plan was basically based on partnerships with the Tacoma Park Community Action Group and the Tacoma Park Recreation Department and the Community Center in DC. But based on the statistics that almost all the street and property crime that occur in our focus area are committed by youth, we felt that it would make sense for us to focus our efforts on youth issues. So therefore, in partnership with the Maryland and DC Community and Recreation Centers, we developed the Rights of Passage Program that targets youth age thirteen through seventeen. We're currently in the development stages of creating the pre-apprenticeship program in partnership with the Tacoma Park Community Action Group. Through the, with the Rights of Passage Program, what it is, is a program that will empower the youth in the focus area with the knowledge and skills and abilities to successfully transition from adolescence through adulthood. They would be involved in experiential exercises, discussions, and workshops, and it's designed to facilitate- And it's designed to facilitate, build, and strengthen the life skills that are crucial to their development, such as social, emotional, personal, physical, and civic. The program, which is going to be offered for boys and girls in Tacoma Park, Maryland, and for girls currently in Tacoma DC, is scheduled to begin on November 19th and the 20th respectively. It will run for eight weeks, meeting for an hour each week, and it will commence on the ninth week with a ceremony signifying their successful passage. The pre-apprenticeship program will target youth age 18 through 25, and it will be offered to young men and women in the Tacoma Park, Maryland and Tacoma DC areas. And we're targeting that will probably, you know, hopefully get that started around late winter, early spring of next year. And both of these programs aim to provide the youth in our focus area with opportunities and outlets that will lessen the likelihood of their being drawn into criminal lifestyles or committing crimes based on necessity.
Okay. I will add just a few points again. Here's an article from the July 30 Gazette on a county program. Tom Perez has quoted it here on, for pre-apprenticeship, quotes one fellow, this changed my whole perspective, said Timothy Goode, 18 of Baltimore City in this case, graduate of the program who was accepted into an apprenticeship. These people are saying, "Now I can get a job and also a career, but learn, I get paid while I learn." It's about giving independence, job skills to go in the workforce. So our interest really is in teaching job skills and really life skills to these people. And we would proceed the pre-apprenticeship with a series of programs like the Rights of Passage but suited to older kids. That is the expensive, I will acknowledge, element in our work plan for outside expenditures. So, you know, we acknowledge that. I also wanted to add there that, as I think you all know, we've been working with former councilmember Larry Rubin, who is an employee of the Carpenters Union on this, on developing the program, and he has some expertise in that, and we appreciate his help. And councilmembers even have been involved in that. So, yeah, the next was community engagement. We discussed at the September 22 council meeting, the National Night Out Whistle Program. We gave you some stats then that are repeated in this progress report. We don't need to read them again. But we did a couple of things since then. One is we invited people who took whistles and gave us email addresses to complete a survey, and there are a few stats from that survey in here. A few notable stats were that 70% said the whistle makes them feel either a little safer or one said much safer. And 55% said that the area around the Tacoma Metro Station is safe only during the day. That's interesting. 15% said safe only during rush hours. 20% said not safe. People also gave us an idea about what they thought were the biggest vulnerabilities around the metro station. Ronnie, do you want to say something about the second whistle distribution that we had?
We had our second whistle distribution last Thursday, November 6th, in which we gave out about 100, over 150, almost 160 whistles. We received the registration sign-ups back from those individuals. And basically, 21 individuals are interested in joining Citizens Patrol. 23 would like to arrange a police home safety inspection, and of course, we'll forward their information to the appropriate police departments. 76 would like to join the Alert Tacoma email list. 26 also stated that they would consider volunteering with Safe Tacoma. And 53 are interested in conflict resolution program.
One of our metrics for our community engagement program was the number of people we did get to sign up for various things, including home inspections by the police, joining various patrols and other activities and so on. We also had, for that matter, people who would attend community crime forums and so on. We have a realization here that this applies not only to public safety matters, that it's often very difficult to get people to come out to meetings. They'll come out to meetings on crime issues when something pretty bad has happened, or if something new has happened, like we get a new chief, which I hope we won't have that occasion for quite a long time. So we're taking a more targeted approach to maybe give something to people, but in exchange for information and for commitments to get involved in community issues. We don't need to ask them to come to meetings that they're not going to come to for the most part. We want to ask them to get involved in ways that they're very comfortable getting involved in. So the whistle program gets safety whistles into people's hands, and we hope they'll never use them, but, you know, maybe they will come in useful. But it also is part of our community-building effort around public safety. Another element of our community engagement is what we call neighborhood safety perspectives. We gave that to you in the council packets on September 22. We've done a couple of things there. We've done some of the physical assessments of conditions and so on. And we heard what you said, for instance, Councilmember Clay noted that she wouldn't want to be sending letters to people who don't have their porch lights on. Well, that was a very good point. So we collected statistics on numbers of houses. And what we would hope to do is change people's approaches to, like leaving their porch lights on, by essentially targeting everyone. So we've had discussions with the police department about distributing safety flyers on a periodic basis. We have one from the police department on home safety that will be distributed in the Philadelphia Eastern Neighborhood in the coming weeks with our newsletter. And in other Old Tacoma neighborhoods, we're trying to make contacts with people in those neighborhoods to distribute those things door-to-door. So we'll try to change attitudes, excuse me, based on what we learned in some of these safety assessments in maybe not completely a direct way. On the other hand, what we know is stuff like streetlights that are out. We can try to take care of that kind of thing directly. So we've done the assessments in Tacoma Park. We expect that is the physical assessments. I haven't yet given those results to the chief or the public works director, because we sort of haven't figured out what to do about some of that. Some of the things that we recorded are things that we wouldn't do anything about, like leaning street signs. That seems to be the norm rather than the exception. Anyway, we recorded them all the same. And we did conduct an attitude survey, and part of this was not only to find out, "Do you feel safe?", but "What specifically makes you feel unsafe and do you think could be improved?" We are sharing access to the survey responses with the chief, who has graciously said that that Colleen Will, the crime analyst, can spend some time helping us with the analysis. And as of this afternoon, I think, I don't have it in front of me, we had something like 118 responses, and I hope they'll prove useful. So I think that's it about the neighborhood safety assessments and community engagement. We're doing our best to try to reach out to people, get names, get people involved with specific things they could do other than just coming to meetings, and try to get to work with the police to get information out. And I think that wraps up all that we have to say by way of a progress report. Otherwise, we gave you a copy of our October monthly report, which we provide to the police representatives on both sides. It includes the funding balances and so on. As of October 31st, there was still nearly $14,000 left from the Tacoma Park allocation. Ronnie had been working for halftime for the first three months. As of October, we moved her to three-quarters time, so that's going to be chewing up more money. We do have our budget out through the end of our fiscal year, which is September 30th. And we have, assuming that you've lent us the rest of the funds that have been budgeted, we should be well-covered there. As we mentioned at the beginning, we'd make the transition to fundraising through grants and other sources than the city of Tacoma Park. So thanks, and we'd be very pleased to take questions or comments or whatever.
If I can first just comment that you noticed that all the street signs are leaning. You should have noticed that they're all leaning in one direction, left, so that they match the community.
That's where you stand.
Well, point of view, yes. And I was happy to see the report that you gave us today. It answered some of the questions that I had about community engagement. But I guess what I would just ask is, if you're happy with the extent that you've engaged the community and the different ways that you've engaged the community, or if there are other things that you see that you would like to do or any other approaches, it sounds like you've recognized some of the difficulties, but I'm just wondering if there's any other ways that you're thinking that you might like to head.
We're always learning, I think, and that's part of this experiment, which is quite new. And we sort of adjust as we go along. And I think, yes, for sure. What I've noticed is that, just in my conversations with folks on this side, on the DC side of Old Tacoma, is that more and more folks know about Safe Tacoma through hearing about the programs that we've been engaged in. And that's certainly positive. And we do have plans to expand and continue and look into different possibilities. One possibility I might mention in addition is possibly in Coolidge, again, I speak in terms of Tacoma DC, because that's what I'm familiar with, Tacoma Park, which are the other possibility. But Coolidge High School may be interested in some aspect of conflict resolution there, incorporated in a new management system, which hopefully will be taking place next year with the Bedford Academy from New York. Looking into the possibility of Rights of Passage Program with Tacoma Elementary School with our brand-new principal, who is wonderful and is outreach-ing, reaching out to the community, which is a very new experience for us compared to the past several years. And so there are opportunities, opportunities have come up in various ways, various times.
All right. The colleagues have questions. Come.
I have some comments. I continue to have a fundamental objection to the structure of Safe Tacoma within the city of Tacoma Park. Yeah, I had this objection when it first came up, and was told a bunch of things, including, you know, this is really going to be focused on crime prevention, and this wasn't going to be a project that went off in lots of different directions, and it was all going to be about this community organizing in response to crime prevention. But it seems to be moving in other directions other than what was even talked about it the first time when I initially objected to it and felt like it was a lot of money and had some equity issues with it. But, you know, the base of this is that as an elected official, it's my job to spend money on behalf of the citizens of Tacoma Park. And this continues to feel to me like a project that we've given money out without a grant competition, without a notice of funds that was available to, you know, different people in the city of Tacoma Park, and that it was a giveaway at a time when emotions were running really high about a spate of on-street muggings in Ward 1. And I think it got expanded a little bit into Ward 3 and a little bit into Ward 4 to get some more political buy-in. But I still feel like fundamentally, the way I'm seeing the materials come forward to the council is kind of antithetical to how I see the role of city government and the role of policymakers and my role as somebody to safeguard the taxpayer dollars. And the other thing about that is the city is so small. So, you know, I find a lot of the things that you're engaged in interesting, and they're good projects, you know? Giving the whistles out to the people at the metro is a good project. Different things about the youth engagement is a good project. Community organizing and getting people to come out to meetings and getting people to sign up for the citizen patrols, that's a good project. So it begs the question to me, if this is a good project that we're going to put forth as a priority for the city of Tacoma Park to engage in, you know, why aren't we doing it in the entire city? And so that's part of it. I am concerned to hear that you're going to compete for the same funds that our SeaSafe program is competing for, because another one of the things that was said at the initial meetings is that this would not have any kind of a negative impact on SeaSafe, and there wasn't going to be any competition with SeaSafe. And I don't know if anybody else remembers that, but I remember that being a very clear, distinctive line when that went forward. So we talked initially that this was going to be a crime initiative. It seems like a youth program. And, you know, I like a youth program, so I'm, of course, intrigued by the various youth program elements, and they sound interesting and engaging, which is great. But I still have to match that, you know, whether or not I like it and I think it's great. There are a lot of things that I like and think are great, but that I, you know, I couldn't promote the city spending tax dollars on, especially when it wasn't something that was being offered to all folks. The, did I see $1,000 for a employment training program with the Carpenters Union that was going to be targeted to kids in the Safe Tacoma Initiative area? Did I see that correctly? Is that a correct interpretation? That's about $1,000 for kids?
It was...
And this is targeted to kids in the Safe Tacoma Initiative area?
The cost to the Carpenters Union was $9,000 for 10 or $16,000 for 20.
Okay.
We would do half and half DC and Maryland. The point you raise about who participates is a very good one, and it's one that we've dodged, basically. We're not turning people away if they're living outside of our area, because our criteria are that they have something to do, the goal to come up, our focus area. There's the transit facilities, they work there, they live there. And, you know, basically, everyone in Tacoma Park, if you take everyone, great assault, uses the farmer's market, the metro station, and so on. And we'll give you a list of, for instance, of addresses of people who took our whistles, and you'll find plenty of people in your ward.
You know, it's actually, it's not about my ward, because I have to tell you that if members of my ward came to me and said, "Hey, Colleen, we want $75,000, and later we're going to tell you what we're going to spend it on." And then later they came to me and they said these were the things that they were going to spend it on, I'd have to say no. I'd have to say I can't support that. And I think that, so let me make a couple of comments, and I'll tell you why I would say no, and then I'll just be done with my comments. There was a comment in there about how the city could provide support, it would require little staff, it would just require staff time. I'm pressed now to get staff time from the staff, and staff time is incredibly valuable and it is actually a cost to us. It's an opportunity cost. When we give staff time out to do one thing, it means they're not doing some other thing that is a city priority. And again, I think that it's the council member's job to define those city priorities, and we did so in the beginning of the year when we set out the budget, and we already overworked the staff. And I'm sure I'm wrong overdue for a chocolate fountain party. I'm also curious about the plans to expand, because I continue to be concerned that the council is going to be, that eventually what's going to happen is you're going to come and they're going to say, "Look, we've had this person on for halftime or three-quarters time or eventually full-time, and now we have this momentum, and we really want you to continue to fund it." So let me tell you the reason why I would say no if my, if Ward 2 constituents came to me and asked to do the same project that you're running. I would say no, because I think that the area of most need for this kind of activity is not Ward 2. I would have to venture that it's Wards 4, 5, and 6. I think we've said that as a council, that those are council priorities. You know, the recent tragic unfortunate incident that happened, did it happen last weekend on the bus, or was it the weekend before? You know, was, I think the young man was a Ward 4 resident, and the other 20-year-old was a Ward 5 resident. So, I mean, not only do I not just want to see that everybody in the city is included, but if I was going to target, especially an expense like $1,000, I mean, I think that the carpenters program is a great idea. I think we're off our, we're spending money here off of our target areas and off of the priorities and things that we put forth as a council. And those have been my issues with this during the whole process, and they continue to be my issues with it. And it's not, you know, to disregard any of the good activities that you're doing or say that they don't value more, that I'm not even interested in them, I am. But just, you know, in terms of my responsibility as how I have to play out my role as a council member, I can't support it like this.
Other comments? Councilmembers.
Thank you, Mayor. I thank you all for coming here tonight and staying to this late hour. I really appreciate the report that you've gone over here and given us tonight. It's, it really makes me feel good to see the progress that has been made since the last time you were here. You've got much more organization to your work. You have many accomplishments where in the past you were talking about what was coming. where in the past you were talking about what was coming. You've actually completed some of these projects or at least in progress in some of them. And it shows the great benefit to having Ronnie as the executive director and moving these things forward. I know that, as you mentioned, that you're partnering with the Tacoma Park Community Action Group on several of these things, and I think one of the areas that you overlooked in answering the mayor on community engagement is the work that you've been doing with the Tacoma Park Community Action Group. I mentioned at the beginning of this session, I don't know if you all were here at the time, but the Tacoma Park Community Action Group, in partnership with some 30 other organizations, including Safe Tacoma, is organizing a youth forum of young people from the local schools here in Maryland, and that includes Blair High School and Tacoma Park Middle School and some of the other schools here in the area. And that has included the principals from those schools. And so I know that the community engagement that you're doing here in Maryland, which is my special interest, is really ramping up. And I know that your participation in that, I think, is much appreciated. The, you know, I hear Councilmember Clay's concerns, but I look at Safe Tacoma and the work that you're doing. I was, you know, hesitant in the beginning with what your original request was. Maybe I got caught up in the emotions at the time. But I think, you know, having made that commitment, I felt like we needed to follow through on that commitment and give you guidance on what we expected out of it. And I see from your report that you're responding to that guidance and addressing the interests of this council. The thing I like about Safe Tacoma is I see it as kind of a model project for a different way of doing business and addressing the crime concerns. It's certainly a different approach than what our police department is expected or able to do, and it's a different approach than what is being used in the CSafe program in the Tacoma-Langley Crossroads area. And I look forward to seeing the results of this model, because as Chief Rukucci has told us, you know, the police cannot do everything on their own. You know, it takes the community involvement, really, to help decrease crime. And I see the types of programs that you've talked about here with the pre-apprenticeship program and the conflict resolution, and some of the other things as being a different approach than we have used here in Tacoma Park in the past to addressing the crime and seeing if we can lower crime. I look forward to seeing the results. As you mentioned, you know, I was involved some with the pre-apprenticeship program. I went out and talked with the carpenters' union about what they have to offer. I think it's a, again, a very positive approach to taking some young men and women who are in a position of not having the skills and yet entering adulthood, giving them a very positive alternative. Yeah, it's different. It's a little bit more costly than not doing it, but it might be a whole lot less costly than letting them enter into some of the alternatives that some of our young people are choosing, and that is, you know, a life of crime. I think the $1,000 is a whole lot less than probably it costs us the first time they get arrested. So I'm interested to see, you know, how this progresses. I don't, I'm not interested to see you come back and say, "Okay, we want a big chunk of money again next year." I'm really interested in seeing you follow through on your fundraising, because it's something that's going to need to do some fundraising to get the, keep the program going. And I think Councilmember Clay's concerns about not competing with CSafe is a legitimate concern, and I would expect that you would coordinate with Chief Rukucci so that he feels comfortable that he doesn't have two projects that are, you know, running against each other, but projects that are, at least in the fundraising aspect, working cooperatively. Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson.
Thanks for coming, guys. I don't have much to add, but I'm not averse to using city funds to have good works and social services provided out in the field. Not averse to that at all. And I'm also, I'm reminded, I'm thinking about how we spend our money in other departments in the city, sometimes wishing that those, that the services would be more out in the field. And so you, you're doing that. You're putting the services out in the field. And I'm a little unclear on what the numbers mean that you bring back to us or what the analysis means, the beginning. And I don't know how many, what our expectations are when it comes to spending money that we have in this way for reducing potential of crime or reaching out to kids. I'm a little bit at sea on what we ought to expect. But I like the approach, and I'd hope that you are building a model so that other areas can be served, if it's appropriate. I can't help comparing what you're doing with what's going on in rec, and I'm wondering, well, how much bang for the buck are we getting in the money, the dollars spent in this endeavor, as opposed to the dollars spent for recreation? I mean, they're different beasts, but at the same time, we're reaching out directly to kids with a hope of having a direct impact and reducing behavior that we don't want to see in the future. And rec, I don't know. Anyway, I'm intrigued. I don't have answers. I'm looking for more, but I'm intrigued by what you're doing. Thank you.
Could I interject? The Rights of Passage program that will start next week in Tacoma Park, Maryland, is cooperating with the rec department here. Ronnie would teach the girls' sessions or lead the girls' sessions, and Okeen Gaston, who is a rec department employee, would do the boys' sections. Do you want to say a little bit more about how that would work, just briefly?
Basically, it's the same curriculum, just tailored to the male, female aspect of it. I'll facilitate the girls. He will facilitate the males. And at certain times, we'll come together to do different activities. I've been working with him as well as Alexandra Wilson to develop this whole program. She felt that there was the definite need here for that sort of program, so that's when we decided to come together and do it, you know, as a team.
Other comments or questions?
Could I just?
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to interject something. I think that we all have agreed we're not police, and that we're not going to duplicate what the police do. But that living in communities as you do, as I do, that you see a deficit someplace. And one of the deficits that I have certainly seen is the way kids and adults, black, white, whatever, interact. I've seen, we see deficits in the way kids resolve problems with each other. And having attended one of the conflict resolution workshops, I think that there is an enormous opportunity there to really find a way of making us better neighbors and dealing with some crime issues, not all of them, obviously, but dealing with a lot of issues in a proactive way that will make this community a better place to live. And I think it is a very difficult thing to pull off. But I think this is, this is an approach that we have made a commitment to develop, and I think that at some point, fairly soon, I think it's something that is going to be of value to this community that can be duplicated elsewhere. And we'll be able to say to people, "Don't do it that way. We already do it that way." And there are different approaches with conflict resolution. I've never seen anything quite like this, and I think this has an enormous amount of potential.
Thanks.
First, I want to say thank you to all of you for volunteering your time. I think you've put in an incredible amount of effort into this for a number of years now. I continue to remain supportive of the project. I'm glad that we were actually able to get the money to you and start, and I look forward to getting the rest of the money to you. I do, I do think that, you know, some of the issues that Colleen raised are very justified. And I think, the way I think about this is sort of that for each individual communities or community within Tacoma Park or area, there's going to be problems or issues that come up, and we should really figure out a way to fund and engage the community to help solve those issues. So it may be different in around the metro, which, you know, includes Ward 1 and Ward 3, and I think rightfully is stretched a little bit toward 4 versus up at the crossroads or, you know, where the shooting happened. I think the issues may be different, but engaging the community and helping to solve the problems is critical. So, and that's what you guys have really started to do. I would give a couple bits of advice around focus. So I think, you know, all the research about crime, long-term crime prevention does talk about addressing opportunity and instructing, giving youth more opportunity and providing programmings for, programming for youth in conflict resolution, all those sorts of things. I do worry about the amount of resources we have and here to deal with those issues and how large the area is in terms of where people are coming from that commit crimes here. So if you look at the statistics, and the chief is here, he may, you know, has a lot more information about this than I do, but most of the crime is not committed by individuals from within Tacoma Park, and most is probably not committed by individuals just over the border in DC. Many of the, you know, many of the people who commit the crimes are from DC, but they're further into DC or they're over in PG County or Prince George's County, sorry. So I just, I worry a little bit about the ability to, through conflict resolution or the youth engagement piece, to be able to really, with the resources we have, create enough of an impact on the catchment area of where the individuals are coming from committing the crime. So that's a little bit of a concern of mine. I'm not saying we shouldn't do those things. It will help with crimes by individuals that are from Tacoma Park or from Tacoma DC, but that's not the majority of where the crimes are being committed from. And I would like to see more of a focus on the community engagement. So I went back and looked at the work plan, and, you know, there's talk in there about realizing that to get more patrol participation or to get people to do safety analyses on their house and stop leaving their screen doors open or do even more drastic things, that it's really going to take more one-on-one interactions. And that, to me, goes back to sort of community organizing, where probably we should have some of the, either volunteer or staff time spent doing door knocking, having substantive one-on-one conversations with people about what's going to get them engaged. Maybe it can start with kind of following up in an aggressive way around the lists generated by the whistle program, substantive training around the whistles, because, you know, giving the whistle out is only, and I've said this to you all before, is sort of half the battle. The second half is making sure that everyone knows what to do when the whistle gets blown, and that takes substantive training. So I'd like to see, and I also think back to that diagram you have in the work plan where community engagement is sort of the building block for everything, and then on top of it comes other things. And so I really think we need to spend more effort, resources, and time on the hard work of community engagement. And then I would even put the last item, I forget the terminology used, but the recidivism, you know,
Youth offenders.
Youth offenders. Like, I would say that should go on the back burner until we really get community engagement done incredibly well in an intense way, and the other programs we already are working on in an intense way. And then my last piece of advice is just around fundraising. You know, you can't, you can't start soon enough. There's just a long cycle associated with applying for grants and then getting them. And, I mean, I think it's good that you're starting. I am also concerned about the conflict with CSafe, but I think if I remember, the number on the grant is pretty small. It's like $3,000 or something like that.
There are actually 50 grants that go up to $3,000.
Right.
We'd be one of 50 applicants, presumably, CSafe also.
But my point more is that we're going to need to go after some 10, 15, $25,000 substantive grants to replace the seed money, which is what I view the city money as, because I, like Colleen and Terry, would not be supportive of giving another substantive amount of money from, or a large amount of money from the city. But I see this as a seed, a seed grant. So those are my comments.
May I?
Correct.
Very quickly. We've done more by way of community engagement than we could report progress on. You know, we've had conversations with Pastor Mark Reiner at the Tacoma Presbyterian Church, with individuals at the Seekers Church. Ronnie is going to be meeting, you said, with someone from Trinity Episcopal on Piney Branch Road in the district. That hasn't come to, yeah, these haven't come to fruition yet, but we're trying to leverage the community institutions to get out to individuals and so on. We just don't have anything that we can report by way of progress. And, oh, right, about where criminals are coming from, let's, those are good points. There are two sides to the equation, however, the other side is victims. What we're trying to also do is reduce the possibility of victimization. That's what, trying to get people to put their porch lights on about carrying safety whistles, that's what that's all about. You know, my friend Lauren Taylor does these courses on self-defense, so targeted to women, young women, and so on. It'd be great to, and that's about staying out of trouble or diffusing situations. It's great to be able to do that to reduce victimization, and that's something where there's no question about where the people involved are.
Yeah, that's why I think we need more. I think more of that's going to be as a result of the kind of community engagement piece. And I would love to see, you know, one of the things probably failing in the MOU and the work plan is we didn't talk about, there's metrics in there, but we didn't say, what does, you know, what does success look like? So we have a metric, but, you know, does a metric mean, you know, is it 50 new people participating in patrols? Is it 100? Is it 1,000? You know, so there's no, like, number in there. And I think one good thing for you all to do would be to really think about what success looks like and then be shooting towards that, because I think it's great to have more conversations with members in churches and have ongoing conversations. But really, the rubber hits the road when you get people to be engaged in a more substantive way, whether it's in a patrol or in a safety training or that sort of stuff.
Councilmember Barry.
Yes, thanks for coming. And I continue to support very strongly the program. I think Terry touched on this, but it's absolutely true, and that is $70,000, while not an insignificant sum of money, pales beside the cost of a single offender who gets into the system where, over the course of a lifetime, it can be hundreds of thousands of dollars of public expenditure, if not millions. And that doesn't even include the costs to the victims and other members of society. So the 70 grand is always a good investment, and it sounds like you are spending the money in a prudent fashion. But as the other colleagues have indicated, and it seems it comes down to a dual focus. One is the population, the pre-offender population that you're reaching out to. And of course, here, the challenge is to target individuals carefully, as carefully as possible, and one learns how to do that over time. It's not something that you will, you will know how to do immediately, but hopefully that's part of the learning that you're going through. The second major thrust, it seems, The second major thrust, it seems to me, is the target hardening, and this includes the porch lights, but more than that, it includes reaching out to every household within this area, wide area of your work, and making sure that they get the information about how to keep themselves safe, how to cooperate with their neighbors, how to communicate with the police. Very important. And you have built-in metrics there because you have households and you have businesses in your surface area, and you can make it a point to touch all of them multiple times. In looking for the offender population, you know, maybe one needs to look a little more broadly, and it seems to me that, you know, one area to look at is the number of citations that the metro police are giving, this is the transit system, police are giving in this area, not just Tacoma Station, but maybe a little bit further south to Fort Totten and up the line to Silver Spring. How many are they giving out? And would those individuals who get these things, which are not for serious crimes, but can be minor crimes that foretell a propensity maybe to do more serious things later on? And working with that population might be useful for you. The other bit of advice that I'll leave you with, and then also a condition for my further support, is I think when you came before us at the very beginning, I suggested very strongly that you talk to the CSafe people. And when Mary was here on the night of Ronnie's introduction, I asked her about this, and she said, no. There hadn't been any formal contact made to her in the program, but you did exchange business cards that evening. So what I will suggest very strongly to you this time is that you meet regularly with her, because even though, as Terry pointed out, it is a different model, there are similarities. There's a lot of knowledge and intelligence that's been developed over years, and there are many similarities between the kinds of things that the CSafe program has learned and what you are learning, and what both of you can be better if you share that information and that learning. So I will place a condition on my further support and release of the additional money, and that is that you formally meet together for your own benefit, at least once a month, to share information and knowledge. And with that condition, I'm happy to support the release of the additional funds, but will also suggest strongly, in this time of very tight budgets, that even though I think these investments are important, crucial, and in the long run are very cost-effective, it would be wise, as you are doing, to move as quickly as possible towards self-sufficiency in the form of other grants and income for the program. Thank you.
If I can just follow up on your point toward the end there about the, about your condition for the release. My sense was that what we need to do tonight is to give the city manager our approval or our disapproval of dispersment of the remainder of the funds. And I think they heard your condition, but I think at this point it would be a promise to do that, not a condition, because we need to kind of move on that tonight. And the sense I get from the group is that we direct the city manager to go ahead and disperse the remaining funds. The other piece of that that I hear from my colleagues is that that dispersal will generally bring to an end the dispersal of funds, and then wish you good luck in going from there and gaining additional funding.
I certainly would entertain additional proposals, as I would from any other group, but I would just set the level of expectation that it'll probably be a higher hurdle for anything additional.
I'll point out that Chief Herrcucci is our grand monitor so far as the city of Tacoma Park is concerned. He is given the responsibility by, delegated by the council to approve our expenditures and supervise our progress. We're aiming to meet with him on a monthly basis. I think we've done okay. Ronnie even sends her weekly management reports to him at his request, and he's your instrument to make sure that we do things like meet with CSafe to, you know, you should tell us, yeah, we'll do that, I can promise that. But you do have a mechanism for guiding our operations until the termination of the number of understanding.
And just to add, I saw Mary Saturday at the Governor's Crime Prevention Summit, and she and I were actually talking and bouncing ideas back and forth on different things that we could possibly do together. So that's going to happen.
Well, I'm with Terry in that I entertain other requests, but not necessarily. Give it to them now.
Okay. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have one remaining item, which is a discussion ordinance amending the code to revise the stormwater review fee and permit fee. We've worked on this a couple of times already, and my feeling is that we can probably do what we need to do tonight in fairly short order, and then we can adjourn to go upstairs and discuss things with the city attorney. So, welcome back to the table for, what, item number three or four tonight?
Yes, yes, yes. We actually, I was in front of you in September to look at a first reading draft ordinance, amending the fee structure. And if you recall, and our cover sheet covers this, in looking at the stormwater code, it was missing fees for institutional, commercial, and industrial stormwater permits. It was, it just got deleted from a previous draft of the ordinance, I imagine, years ago. So we were successful in April and then made effective in May to add the fee structure from what we proposed based on what were the existing fee structures in the rest of the ordinance. What we discovered over the summer from a variety of applications was that our fee structure was not in line with surrounding jurisdictions, primarily Rockville, Gaithersburg, and Montgomery County. You have before you tonight the same chart that I presented back then, back then in September when we proposed amending our fee structure. We've added a couple of other examples, and again, these are all real live examples of permits that have actually come through our office and facilities that are in the works. What became apparent to us is that the proposed, or the fee structure that we created in April and May resulted in, in some cases, much higher costs for permit fees for construction projects, and in other cases, much lower costs. It was kind of an apples and oranges comparison. The proposal that I brought before you in September was basically trying to amend our existing fee structure, putting some minimum and some maximum ends on it so as to keep it more in line with the surrounding jurisdictions. In further discussions with the city engineer, what we discovered is we were never going to get in a system that really was reflective of all of the surrounding jurisdictions' fees. And so we took a hard look at what Gaithersburg and Rockville were doing. Basically, as I presented back in September, their fee structure for permits, and this is not review or anything else, but for stormwater permits themselves, was a percentage, 10% of the actual stormwater construction costs themselves. And that's a, the cost estimate is created by the engineers that design the system. It's a number that they're coming up with for their client anyway, so it's not a difficult piece of information to get. Of course, it's not a receipt or a reimbursement, it's just an estimate of the cost proposal based on their experience and their expertise. Our concern with that at the time in September was we were a little bit worried that that would create a disincentive for commercial or institutional or industrial facilities within the city from going beyond the strict letter of the law. And in fact, what we're trying to do is encourage innovative thinking in stormwater management. So what the city engineer went back and sort of started working with was an idea where we would replicate the model of permit fee structures that Rockville and Gaithersburg have, but we would add a little Tacoma Park twist and try to create a way to provide an incentive for those permities that felt they were able to, based on the site constraints and their own budgets, to enhance and enlarge their stormwater provisions by exceeding our code language. So what we brought before you tonight, and why we're doing this in work session discussion is because we'd sort of started down one path, discovered that it really wasn't getting us, getting us where we wanted to go, and we've sort of regrouped, and now we're presenting to you an additional option for your consideration. And so what you see in, on that back sheet, if you, if you take a look at each of the four examples, is a cost estimate of the permit fees in our current code and a cost estimate of the fees as we propose in the, in the changed code. And again, it's, it's very much in line with the surrounding jurisdictions because it mirrors their process. The piece that we've added to it is to provide the ability for an applicant to get up to 50% of the permit fees, and we're talking some significant money in some of these cases, returned to them if they exceed our code requirements. And I wanted to just say a little bit, and I know that the hour is late, and this is more detail than anybody can absorb in one time, but our design criteria, our permit criteria within our stormwater management code is dictated by the state of Maryland. We use their design manual, and our code itself is created around the model code that the state had, had recommended. So our stormwater code mirrors the state's model. The design criteria within the code are those that match the state model. And they list out a variety of methods and means to reach the stormwater controls that are required by our permit standards. Some are structural, some are non-structural. Basically, what we're going to try to propose is a fee structure that keeps us in line with the surrounding jurisdictions, but also adds the ability for the city engineer in reviewing a case-by-case application to say, not only have you met our design criteria, but you've exceeded it because you're going to put on a green roof, or you're going to have porous pavement in your parking lot, or you're going to do some type of infiltration that's above and beyond the code because they want to enhance their project, they want to advertise their green feature, they want to do the most they can do. And then we'll be able to work with them to rebate up to 50% of that permit fee, to encourage and enhance what we're actually getting on, on the back end of that, once the facility is constructed, once all the pipes and stones and bricks are in place. We want to make sure that what we have is not just compliant with the law, but to greatest extent exceeding that, so that we'll have better water quality from a stormwater aspect and the end of that.
Sounds like a good approach. Comments?
Councilmember Stein.
Thank you. This last week, I had the pleasure of attending a Maryland Municipal League meeting, and a guest at the meeting was the Secretary of Environment from the state of Maryland, whose name I forget at the moment. But he was very complimentary of Tacoma Park and our stormwater management and our work to do better. And he held us up as an example of what he wished that all communities in Maryland would adhere to, and yet recognize that, that we too have room for improvement. But I, again, I'd like to pass that compliment along to you because you've been managing that program for some time, and so we thank you. I, as far as the plans, I think it's, it's good. We obviously need to make some changes here, and I look forward to hearing more suggestions from the council on where we go, because I haven't formed an opinion.
Councilmember Ray.
I just wanted to say thank you, because I think, you know, we have gone back and forth on this a bit, but I personally really appreciate you and the staff listening to that and having a healthy debate with us, and I think getting to a place that I think is really good and I'm encouraged by and very supportive of.
Councilmember Clay.
Yeah, I also just want to thank you for going back over after you've done all the initial work and coming back with another solution. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson.
Dale, did you say that the up to 50% reduction was a recent addition to this? And did you find that model in other places, or did you come up with that on your own?
I have to hand that off to Ali. I think the city engineer developed that, that proposal. He may have seen it in other places that I'm not aware of. There certainly isn't anywhere else in Maryland that we're aware of that's going on, or in Northern Virginia, but it may be happening other places in the country.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that, and the enterprise zones in, in Maryland are a way to encourage building where the state wants that building done. And there's provision in there that you can get a parking waiver up to 50%. So in that, in a sense, it's similar to that. It's rewarding things that you want, and I personally like that as a general approach in government and rewarding the things you want and penalizing the things you don't want. In a sense, that's what we ought to be taxing people on, is things we don't want. So I commend you on that, and thanks to Ali.
Sounds like you've come up with a winner.
Well, just one brief question I have, if I may, is we have sent this over to the city attorney's office to review. We did get comments back from Linda Perelman today. She was comfortable with this approach, though had some recommendations that we try to provide a little bit more of example in our 50% reduction. So I wanted to get a sense of what the council would be comfortable in, for the ordinance in terms of that language. We've left it fairly general. You know, if the planned stormwater management controls exceed the code requirements, the applicant may be eligible for reduction of a fee up to 50% if you're comfortable with that, or if you need more defining language relative to that. The city attorney's recommendation was that we provide some examples, i.e. green roof, permeable pavement, you know, some other examples. I didn't know-
That's what I was, I strongly agree that it needs more specificity there, because it's unfair to them. They'll have, they'll immediately assume they're getting a 50% reduction if you don't put in some examples or good idea or guidelines.
You know, hopefully the technology will improve, so we, we don't know today what will be available 10 years from now, so we don't want to lock ourselves in, but at the same time, we do want to make sure that it communicates the intention of the council on our goals, that it's not a gimme. It's really, you got to reach a really high bar to get that.
Yeah, it seemed to me that, I liked the idea of examples, but it also gave you some sort of flexibility to negotiate with them about what they might put in and try and encourage or incentivize them to get the behavior they want.
Yeah, it's putting the decision-making where the expertise is, so, good.
Okay. Then you've got what you need to bring that back to us?
Yes.
Good. Then we are adjourned.